This conference will now be recorded.
As you all can see, we have a large gathering this morning and we have the comments get through. So, as we keep my comments brief on Zano's role board chair, instructions of other staff and board here with us? Well, I think we will quote all staff because may we will be fiddling yourselves as we book this testimony. So, for it, please introduce yourself.
Good morning. We have Wise, Commissioner, and Vice Chair.
Good morning. I'm Malone, Commissioner.
That is Farnum County Council. I think that we'll have others introduce themselves as we appear on the agenda because that will save us a lot of time. I want to acknowledge the fact that Benton County is on historical lands of the Calhoun people. And our C, the people, Quikattack, also use these lands in historical time. And that there are descendants of these original inhabitants of the lands and managers of the land with us still at the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde and Colets. And that we seek to honor their decisions about the lands and our people as we make our everyday decisions. Are there any announcements? Okay, we have a full agenda today, but first up is comments from the public. And we thank you to Dawn for putting together a list of those of you who are going to speak to us with respect to the bargaining. And I will call on you in the order that Dawn has put together. So, please, this is an opportunity for Ask Me members to speak to us directly, beginning with Don Dale.
Thank you. And good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing the employees under the collective bargaining unit Ask Me to speak with you today. My name is Don. My name is Don Dale, and I am the President of Ask Me Local 2064. I work for the Sheriff's Office as a business analyst too, and have been employed with Benton County for 10 years. We currently contract with 315 employees, approximately 61% of the county's workforce. On March 15th, 2021, Ask Me started negotiations for our collective bargaining unit that expired June 30th, 2021, almost 10 months ago. This last week, we sent out to membership the county's last best and final offer, which membership rejected, authorizing the bargaining team to call and impact. But before we did that, membership wanted a chance to speak one-on-one with the Commissioners so that you could hear our concerns. We are at your service every day, a county tagline that every employee strives for and holds to their core values as they perform their job to the highest standards. Benton County has a lot of amazing, dedicated, and high-performing employees that I am proud to say I work with every day. That was apparent when the county was called to service during the COVID-19 pandemic. As the bargaining unit has met with management to negotiate a fair contract, we kept in mind the 2040 goals that the county has adopted, which are based on principles of equity and health, including words such as "safe," "forward-thinking," "supportive people," "opportunities," "resilience," "equity for everyone," "diversity," and "health in all actions." It is true, we came to the bargaining table with a long list of requests and changes. Some were replacing old language such as email instead of telegraph. Some were updating statute and legal language to meet current standards. And some were ensuring that additional language was added to protect our workers from the unsafe working conditions that resulted in a fatality within the life of our last contract. There were multiple changes that weren't just about economics. But don't get me wrong, those have also been an issue. In the last two four-year contracts, employees experienced broken promises from management on working on a model for a pay scale that would keep us current with market wages, similar to our neighboring counties. Since that didn't happen, we've seen a turnover rate of 53% of our employees just within the Ask Me bargaining unit since our last contract. On top of that, we're looking at an inflation rate of 6.2% for this current year. Bringing up employees' wages current with the market and offering a longevity incentive will help with keeping our workforce in Benton County, which aids in the retention of historical knowledge, better customer service for our citizens, and improved employee morale and productivity. In closing, I ask you, the Commissioners, to help us ratify our contracts by creating an environment of valuing employees, providing equity in pay and benefits, bringing our wages up to market effective July 1st, 2021, adding longevity pay incentives for employees who have worked for the county 10 years plus, giving internal candidates an interview when applying for a job when they meet minimum qualifications, recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and improving workplace safety language and accountability. I also sent to each of the Commissioners last night an additional 19 letters from employees who were unable to speak today but wanted their voices heard. We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone that has a microphone on that's not speaking, could you please turn it off so we minimize feedback? Thank you. Next up is Joe Moore. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you again for having us. My name is Joseph Moore, and I am the Chief Steward of Ask Me Local 2064. I work for Public Works as an engineering and surveying tech two. I have gone back and forth for weeks now over what I wanted to speak about today, when I realized what I must speak about today, and how it has set me on the path that has led me here. I started working for Benton County in April of 2019. On August 9th, 2019, Benton County suffered the tragic loss of Pete Newman. And while I never got the opportunity to really get to know him, the impact of his death on my coworkers was all I needed to know. I made the decision that day that I wanted to be Chief Steward and do everything I could to keep something like that from ever happening again. I became a steward of Ask Me Local 2064 in December of 2019, and then the President appointed me Chief Steward on June 6th of 2020. On May 11th, 2021, I had the privilege of testifying in front of the Oregon Senate Committee on Labor and Business in support of House Bill 2682, which has been referred to as Pete's Law, a legislative act relating to the rental of safety, the safety standard of rental construction vehicles. On June 11th, 2021, the Governor signed the bill into law, and it went into effect September 25th of 2021. As Chief Steward, I have been involved in a multitude of member issues, including fact findings, grievances, unfair labor practices, and more. I am co-chair of the Avery Complex Safety Committee. I worked side-by-side with Commissioners Zano, Ogierau during the wildlife relief efforts, spent the first five months of this year working shifts in the Emergency Operations Center, and I've gotten to witness firsthand the good that Benton County can do. I have also seen firsthand the shortcomings of Benton County leadership. Safety is much more than preventing another death, and the county has recently started to see positive changes in the direction of building a better culture of workplace safety. Yet the additions the union proposed in the contracts have been largely rejected. I understand and respect the fact that this and the other issues brought forth today by our members are not the results of decisions and actions made directly by you, our Commissioners, but they are yours to address and fix moving forward. I will close with a similar statement to the one I made to the Senate Committee. I am only the Chief Steward of Benton County Ask Me Local 2064. You are the stewards of Benton County and its employees. Thank you for your time today. Look forward to serving you in the coming days.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, one more reminder to turn microphones off when you're not speaking. Next up is Kaylee Olson. Welcome, Kaylee.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I just want to start by acknowledging the unprecedented amount of people I've seen on this meeting, all of these supporters behind us. And so if that doesn't show the importance of these issues, I sure don't know what will. Commissioners Ogierau, Malone, and Wise, I am honored to come before you today representing the Ask Me members of Benton County. My name is Kiwi Olson. I'm an executive board member for Local 2064 and an administrative specialist for the Health Department. I came to Benton County feeling excited to be part of such a progressive organization that prioritized health in all actions, thriving communities, and sustainability. I look forward to working with a local government that advertised diversity, equity, and inclusion, safety, and health and wellness. I was thrilled to join people who are dedicated to taking care of their community. The invaluable employees of Benton County have lived up to these expectations and beyond. In my three and a half years with the county, I have worked with people from every county department, whether liaising for the Health Department, serving in the Emergency Operations Center, or fulfilling my union duties. I have been impressed, inspired, and humbled by the sincere compassion and commitment I have witnessed of Benton County employees. I've gone to know members who have not seen a raise in 20 years, who are exposed to escalated and sometimes violent community members as part of their job but not offered appropriate safety training in order to respond, who suffered the loss of a dear friend and coworker while on the job, who cover management duties or multiple roles without fair compensation, who are discriminated against, harassed, and mistreated, who beg with no results for more training and career development opportunities to better serve the county. I myself was tasked with the additional duties of a role I was later told I didn't qualify to receive an interview for, while still fulfilling those duties and training the person hired for the job that I didn't get. I'm still here fighting to serve Benton County, and I'm applying for yet another promotional opportunity within the county. Without longevity pay, I have no choice but to continue seeking promotional raises if I want to keep up with the cost of living in Benton County. Our last two contracts lasting eight years total have robbed Ask Me members of the pay, career development, safety, equity, and representation that they deserve. When Benton County was hit with wildfires, ice storms, and COVID-19, employees sacrificed their time, energy, and mental health because they are devoted to this community that you represent. When we entered the current negotiating period, our members thought leadership would understand the unprecedented hardships that they endured as a result of the already broken systems that were exacerbated by COVID-19. But management bargaining spokesperson has made it abundantly clear that those in charge are not interested in responding to employees' needs, stating that our priorities continue to elude them when we have been loud and clear. Benton County is experiencing tremendous turnover, and many staff tell me that their reason for leaving is the lack of hope that leadership will ever truly value them. I implore you, Commissioners, please, if we are to retain with less of our workforce, please listen to what our members have to say and do your part to make Benton County the progressive community that it claims to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. Next up is David Malone. Welcome, David.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is David Malone, and I am on the E-board of our Local 2064 Ask Me Union membership. I've been an employee of Benton County for nearly 12 years, serving as a land surveyor in the Engineering and Survey Department. Although the county espouses some very great-sounding philosophies in their recruitment information, the reality is that many new employees worked here only long enough to gain experience and training before moving on to other jobs in local government agencies with better wages and promotional opportunities. I have watched management try for nearly a decade to implement an unfair pay-for-performance program that is flawed in its concept. The salary schedule that was implemented with the concept of this program has caused our salaries to be seriously eroded compared to other local government agencies. After two bargaining cycles, the union membership thought we had convinced management to drop this unfair, demoralizing, and divisive program. Instead, management has now introduced the idea of exceptional performance pay awards. These awards are to be based on the eligibility opinion of the department and human resource directors that may be out of touch with the day-to-day duties of the rank-and-file members. Two people sitting side-by-side and performing the same job will see these awards as favoritism when only one of them gets an award. It is also apparent that few awards will actually be given as department directors will have to budget in advance for these awards, somehow predicting exceptional performance. Meanwhile, the union membership will continue to see our salaries fall behind comparable county employees. It is time for county management to recognize that the currently very high employee turnover rate is a problem for both now and into the future. Stop trying to implement ideas the employees don't want, and instead, listen to what is important to the employees. Bargain in good faith for what will make Benton County jobs attractive to employees and reward employees for their long experience with longevity pay. Help us stop the revolving door that is our experience of working for Benton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next up is Michelle Bangs. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Bangs. I'm a qualified mental health associate, housing coordinator for Behavioral Health with the Health Department. I'm also a trustee on the Local Ask Me 2064. I stand with Benton County since December of 2013. I have served those in our community whom most people want to ignore, those with a severe mental health diagnosis. I started my time with Benton County providing medication support and basic life skills training with some of our most valuable and vulnerable community members. In 2014, I was in a car accident in a county vehicle. I was out of work for one year and am now considered 25% disabled from this accident. In 2015, I started as a housing coordinator with Behavioral Health Rental Assistance Program. Since 2015, I have seen many coworkers in management come and go. In my eight years serving Benton County, only five Ask Me represented behavioral health employees have been here longer than me. If we want to show we are fiscally responsible with taxpayers' money, we need to start focusing on why we have such a high turnover. Better working conditions, including safety language, career advancement and support, more step increases and longevity pay is what's needed. I myself have been at Step 6 for years and have trained numerous employees just to watch them leave for other agencies and get better pay, better healthcare, and most of all, the recognition for their hard work and sacrifices they make for their community and their families. As a community, we need to show that we value everyone equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Johan. Welcome.
Hello. My webcam's off because we're there's now a webcam limit. So, I'll just be reading for you all. But good morning, Commissioners, fellow staff and community members. For those of you who do not know me, I am Johan, and I use he and they pronouns. I am the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator for Benton County and an Ask Me member. I'm here today to encourage the board of Commissioners and management to let Juneteenth as a county-recognized holiday. Juneteenth, June 19th. It's a holiday recognizing the day that enslaved Black people in Galveston, Texas, were informed that they are emancipated on June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation. Juneteenth has been celebrated since 1865, the various state and local holiday observations and celebrations. It's a day that reflects, learns, and celebrates the freedom that Black Americans were denied for so long after being the workers that built this country. This year, President Joe Biden made Juneteenth an official holiday. Our peers at other jurisdictions such as the City of Pervallis recognizes holiday, as well as Oregon State University and many other employers in the region. My partner works at OSU, and he had the holiday off, but I was still working and unable to celebrate the holiday with him. Many of my fellow employees have similar situations happen, and more will as other employers join in recognizing this holiday. Our county should join in observation of this holiday so we can show our community members we are dedicated to equity, diversity, and inclusion. Having the day off will allow our staff to join in community celebrations, community service, relaxation, and jubilation, all central themes of a holiday. It will also signal to potential future employers that we recognize the importance of supporting Black people in their community. Oregon was founded on anti-Black laws, and we need to learn from this history and use Juneteenth and other events to educate, celebrate, and build community. I have drafted a Juneteenth resolution that's ready for review whenever you wish to see it. Additionally, we can explore other means to get Juneteenth as a holiday. We aren't just asking this for Ask Me members, but for the entire organization to recognize this holiday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Johan. Okay, next, I'd like to welcome Chris McFarland. I'm sorry about the camera issues. I hope expecting all of you, but it's kind of distracting.
Chris, we can't hear you.
Hey, that would probably help, huh? Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for giving me the time to share with you this morning. My name is Chris McFarland, and I am a Benton County employee. As you are aware, we are currently in the middle of mediation for our union contract, and we are beyond frustrated with how these negotiations have been handled by the bargaining team representing the county's interests. As county employees, we are not asking to be the highest paid, nor are we asking for unreasonable benefits. What we are asking for is to be where surrounding counties are regarding our fair contract. But more importantly, we want, as public servants, to feel that Benton County truly appreciates what every employee brings to the services that keep Benton County the exemplary county that it is. I am a substance use disorder counselor for the ACT team in the Mental Health Division for Benton County Health Services. We work with the most vulnerable, high-intensity, historically discarded population in the community, and we do it with passion, empathy, and a strong desire to make a difference in our community. We don't do it for the money, and we certainly don't do it for the prestige, but we do hope that our pay and benefits compensate some of the mental and emotional toll our line of work takes on us as there is a tremendously high rate of burnout within the mental health, social work field resulting in incredible shortages of counselors, therapists, and social workers in the state. These past 21 months, Benton County employees have been outstanding in addressing the needs of the community to fight COVID-19, spearheading testing, vaccinations, and PPE made available to all county community members and making sure that all of Benton County residents have what they need to be safe and make it through these unparalleled times. I started my career late in life, but I chose to start my career here in Benton County five years ago with the hope and intent of retiring here, doing what I love to do for my community. The main point of holdup pertaining to the new contract has to do with longevity pay. Benton County has repeatedly refused to entertain the idea of offering longevity pay. Currently, after an employee's fourth year, they are maxed out on their salary, so there's little motivation to commit to the long-term employment here. Benton County invests thousands of dollars to recruit, hire, and train new employees. You would think that they would want to incentivize employees to stay past four years. I have invested five-plus years of my career to serving the public here in Benton County, but one incentive is there for me to invest another five, 10, or 15 years to public service here if my longevity is not appreciated. We know that as county commissioners, that you take great pride in Benton County being a model of how to successfully mitigate a global pandemic while maintaining the high-quality services that Benton County provides to its communities every day. So, we are asking that you use your commitment to serving the people of Benton County to sway the county's bargaining team to strongly reconsider their negative stance concerning longevity pay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Nancy Swain. Welcome, Nancy. Nancy, I see your mic is on, but we can't hear you. I suggest that we skip Nancy for now, and I'll come back to her at the bottom of the list, and hopefully we'll be able to hear her voice. Next up is Mercedes Magaña. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mercedes Magaña. I have been a community health worker for the last three years. Prior to becoming a community health worker, I was the WEC's sort of fire for 25 years. Due to budget cuts, Benton County eliminated my position with the WEC program. After I became a health navigator, I decided to embrace my new position and develop a position that links Oregon Health Plan, Oregon Madis Care, and WEC. I am proud to say that my position is one of only a few in the entire state of Oregon. Throughout the years, I have had the opportunity to work and learn from great professionals who, like me, are loyal to the county and have a great work ethic. Yeah, many of us don't even remember the last time we received a raise. I'm not asking for a favor. I am only asking for what is fair for me and all county employees. I cannot afford to go on a strike. Those things are important to me, and I'm not willing to let them go. I recommend that you do a work shadow to see what we do, Ask Me members, what Ask Me members do for the community. You need to see our work. We are here not only because we need to pay our bills, but also because we love our community. We love what we do, and we love to see the difference we can make in our clients. We love what we do, and we love to see the difference we can make in our clients. I implore you to please consider how meaningful proposed contract changes will be for staff to feel appreciated and to enable them to remain with Benton County for years to come. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you, Mercedes. Okay, um, next up is Gabrielle Dibble.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I started my career at the county in April of 2021. I know that's not very long, but in my short time here, two things have become crystal clear to me. The first is that the county is full of incredible people, people who work hard for their families and their communities, people who don't let fire, smoke, snow, floods, frustrated members of the public or a pandemic get in the way of their work. These are the people that make the county run. They are the engine that drives all the wonderful resources and projects around Benton County that make it a great place to live. Think of all the union-represented people you work with and what they do here. The employees of Benton County are a great team, and I am lucky to be working with so many kind, helpful and capable people. I love working here because of them. The second thing I noticed is that these people are underpaid and underappreciated. I quickly learned how unwilling the management team was to bargain with the union, delivering bargaining materials at the last minute, offering rejections to every proposal the union presented, no offers to compromise or meet halfway, the inaccurate comps of counties that do not truthfully represent ours in size, positions, duties, et cetera. It seems to me that the county's team is either incapable or disinclined to give their union-represented workers a fair contract. I am not sure how one would expect to run a county smoothly and effectively for decades on end if its workers top out of their salary ranges in five to six years. I feel that most people would not want to work somewhere that only increased their pay the first five or six years of their 30 to 40-year career. It would be in the county's best interest to work with their employees to make sure that the compensation for the excellent ceaseless work they provide are equal in quality. Consider what may cost more in time and resources, ensuring employees are safe, happy and well compensated for the hours of their life they dedicate to the county, or constantly having to recruit, hire and train the same positions over and over again. Additionally, consider the impact that may have on departments and offices affected most by turnover. Perhaps one could make it easier for existing employees to move up into higher-paying positions by automatically granting interviews to those who qualify for open positions. I don't think what we are asking is too much, and if it seems like a lot to the management team, it is because the county has been undercompensating their employees for a long time now. We have learned in these last two years that life is too fragile to accept the bare minimum to survive. We want to thrive and prosper. Everyone deserves that. If the county wants to continue to be a wonderful place to work and live, it needs to keep up with the inevitable changes that come with the passage of time. Remember, we're giving weeks, months, even years of our life to the county that we will never get back. Can you really tell us that we are asking for too much? Thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider what we've talked about today.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Okay, um, next is Sean Lorenzi from the DA's office. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak this morning. Uh, my name is Sean Lorenzi. I'm a victim advocate in the district attorney's office. Um, I've been with the county six and a half years. Uh, I live, work, volunteer, play and raise my son in our county, and I love it here. And I have to be honest with you, it breaks my heart to hear that other programs and departments in the county are, um, in a similar situation as far as turnover, um, folks realizing that they max out in six years and realizing that the county does not, um, pay for a cost of living increase that covers us. So it's essentially, for me, I'm, I've maxed out and now I'm actually losing money every year. Um, so it's just, uh, it's an untenable situation. Uh, the turnover in our office is, um, similar to what I'm hearing in others. We can't keep people, and we also can't attract people to our office. Victim advocacy is an extremely tough, tough job. Uh, it's a tough field. Um, you know, we work with individuals at their worst moments and, uh, do the best we can to, to support them through the criminal justice system, uh, providing education, walking them through trials, um, making sure victims' rights are enforced and, and working along the attorneys in our office as well. And, um, it's not easy. What's also not easy is that our compensation doesn't match what we do. Uh, this is the hardest job I've had for the least amount of pay in my lifetime. I'm 47, and I've done, uh, several things. I've worked for the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron. I heard them mentioned earlier. I've worked for the, uh, Select Tribe, uh, and believe it or not, they pay comparable, uh, comfortable salaries. I heard them mentioned earlier, and I just wanted to put that out there to the Board of Commissioners. When working for the tribes, uh, I found their pay equal to what they were asking me to do, uh, and that's what they would want, uh, just so that you are aware of that. Um, I'm not gonna repeat what was already eloquently stated, and, um, I'm not gonna just kind of go over, um, what I've heard and what saddens me, but I will ask our Board of Commissioners to please hear everyone's voice. Please know that we want to stay in Benton County, want to work for Benton County. I don't want to be looking for a new job. I don't want to be working backwards, uh, in terms of salary. I would love to, um, just kind of get paid for what we do. Um, it's, it's, I don't feel it's a whole lot to ask. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for everyone who's making statements and sending letters. I, I love it. I'm seeing that I'm now a part of a larger group, um, in a, in a similar situation. So thank you, and thank you for, uh, taking this time to, to hear me out. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, Sarah Anderson. Welcome, Sarah.
Good morning, Benton County Commissioners. First, I would like to start with a deeply heartfelt thank you to you all. To my knowledge, counties throughout this day do not compare to Benton County when it comes to their commissioners' dedication to emergency preparedness. I would also like to take the time to thank all the department directors, as well as the Benton County Sheriff's Office, whom I work for, who have contributed countless hours of staff time, as well as their own time, to the response efforts over the last 18 months. You all have done everything in your power to ensure the health and safety of this community, and without your support, I don't believe our emergency response would have been so successful. The reason I'm here today is to advocate for the improvement of our current union contract in regards to overtime compensation. I've worked nearly 400 total overtime hours since March of 2020. This does include overtime hours worked outside of emergency response. I feel very strongly that employees should be able to hold a comp bank of 64 hours to utilize when their schedule allows. It's important to remember that EOC staff are not just staff, but they're some of the most dedicated county government employees. These are highly committed staff who chose to show up when others chose to stay home. I witnessed firsthand the effects that emergency response has on staff, and I will touch on some of my own experience. As many of us know, four of our JIC staff, our Joint Information Center staff, have chosen to leave our organization. This staff in particular worked many overtime hours to produce exceptional messaging to inform our communities during pandemic and wildfire responses. This staff did not have the ability to take time off to heal for response. In my own experience, I can honestly say I struggled my own, with my own recovery from the last 18 months. I worked evenings, weekends, long hours in difficult environments where although I was exhausted and overwhelmed, I stayed. It was not a matter of if I could do it, it was I had to do it to protect and serve my community. I will say that most of us in the EOC sacrificed something to get that work done. I personally left my partner at home, uh, when he needed me most. Like many of you, I did not see my family for most of, sorry, um, for most of 2020. That includes holidays and special events. I apologize. I had to stay home and participate Christmas morning through tear-filled Zoom calls, and I was unable to travel with my dad to California for my grandfather's funeral. I gave all of this up to minimize the risk of bringing COVID to our team and ensure the work was completed. I apologize. My team needed me, and I felt I could not leave them with the amount of work we needed to accomplish. We know that COVID is not going anywhere anytime soon. We know that disasters are only going to become more frequent and severe as climate change worsens and, and as the need for emergency response can be more frequent. We know that we need to take care of the people who take care of us. It is critical to have a system that, that allows employees the flexibility to take time off after working so many painstaking hours. It's not only allows for a standardized accountability process for employees, but it also shows that our organization prioritizes adequate recovery time for our employees. I have, I have seen what amazing things our organizations can accomplish when we come together to solve a problem. I have felt disdain that employees feel when they feel they have worked for, what they have worked for does not feel recognized or that they do not feel heard when they bring up the need for earned rest. I ask that you please consider implementing an equitable process for comp bank of worked overtime hours for exempt ACT employees comparable to the Benton County non-reps and O&amp;A employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate all that you've done, uh, you and your team, um, and everyone that helped out during this COVID emergency. It's certainly not been easy. Thank you. Um, next up is Nancy Swain. Nancy, I see that you are also a woman presenter, so, um, please go ahead.
Thank you, and I, and thank you to my wonderful director, Lynn McKee, because I'm using her computer. Mine didn't work when I tried to talk earlier. Um, and again, thank you, commissioners, for listening to my comments. I want to speak today about the importance of longevity pay and pay in general. I started working for Benton County in April of 2003. So you can see I'm experienced on the issue. I remember when I started, someone in HR said, "Oh, you'll be working at the Fairgrounds? Hmm, good luck." Huh, I thought, what does that mean? Am I making the right decision? Well, it couldn't have been too bad of a decision because I dedicated the last 18 years to Fairgrounds and Benton County. What is distressing to me as I start to plan my retirement is the knowledge that my wages have been below market rates for years. At the time when I was hired, I was coming from being laid off by Sula Packers. The country was in a recession, and I was grateful for the job. I felt that as long as I could raise my son, maintain our home and have good medical coverage, the lower wage was not critical. I know over the years I could have left for higher wages. That's on me, but working to serve my community and staying on as a loyal employee of Benton County fed my soul. As I look to my upcoming retirement, though, I'm now feeling hungry. Will my portfolio enable me to spend time with my grandchild, my family and friends far from here now? I've saved, invested and optimized the county's retirement savings option, but saving as much as I could when not earning as much as I could has made a stark difference. This is what I want you to understand, that I will encourage every employee to vote to strike for better wages, not because they want a bigger paycheck next month, but because it does impact greatly when you do retire in ways that you're not fully aware of when living your life day by day. And while I look back on my 18 years with Benton County, I don't feel as though I made the wrong decision at all, but I do feel Benton County got the better deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I would like to thank, um, Don Dale for putting together this list of presenters this morning. I know that there may be others of you who would like to speak as well, but because we have such a full agenda today, including a couple of public hearings, I'm going to leave it at this, uh, pre-agreed list, but I urge you, if you still have more to say, if you would like to add your voice, to send us a message in written form, um, you know, through Don or directly, um, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, I appreciate hearing from all of you, and, uh, we will be, um, talking further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I do not have any changes to the agenda, so unless my fellow commissioners have something to add, we will, um, approve it as it is written. Uh, it does include two executive sessions at the end of the meeting for property transactions and labor negotiations. So thank you again for all of you who attended this morning to add your voices. Uh, we will now begin with our work session with an update from our Department Operations Center, Ivo Hald and Suzanne Hoffman.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll turn it right over to April for the latest, uh, information that we have to share with you today. Thank you, April.
Thank you, Suzanne. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Before I launch into the COVID-19 update, I do want to say that it was touching to hear from our dedicated Benton County professionals, and I, I appreciate their presence here today. I'll start off with, uh, an overview of cases. Uh, our COVID-19 case numbers have been doing some interesting things. Uh, after about 10 weeks of hovering near, uh, closer to 200 cases a week, they dipped for a few weeks to just about 100 cases. Uh, then in the week of November 21st, um, the week of Thanksgiving, cases plummeted to a total of 49, which moved Benton County to the substantial community transmission category. Late last week, however, we learned of a lab error that resulted in underreporting of a total of 136 positive tests and over 6,700 negative tests statewide. Many of these test results were attributed to Benton County residents, and we expect a total of around 40 positive cases to be added to previous case numbers throughout the month of November. For the week after Thanksgiving week, the cases jumped back up to the high transmission category with a total of 140 cases. Part of this is likely due to the lab error and part due to a hike in cases after the holiday weekend. We aren't yet sure if all the positive cases from this lab error have been imported into the system, but the cases do appear to be distributed throughout the month of November, as I said. Testing, um, testing continued to be reported in, in, in robust numbers. Um, the testing positivity rate remains low. Uh, the last report was, uh, just under 2% and, and the lowest in the, in the state. So to summarize the case counts, based on the information we have so far, it looks like we've had less of a drop than the recent week's case counts have indicated. Still lower than the high numbers we saw in September and October, but not the precipitous decrease that we had hoped for. So moving on to, to vaccination, um, right now, Benton County is at 68.7% of the entire county, all ages, fully vaccinated, and we continue to make progress in this regard. The CDC changed its guidance for booster doses on last Monday from stating that all adults may to all adults should get a booster dose when the time is right. That's at two months for J&amp;J, six months for one of the mRNA vaccinations, um, Moderna and Pfizer. The new variant of concern, which I'll cover briefly in just a moment, was cited as one of the reasons for this change in guidance. As Benton County has about 25% of vaccinated individuals boosted now, we're partnering with Samaritan and Oregon State University to hold two booster events at the OSU Alumni Center next Wednesday and Thursday, December 15th and 16th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The goal of these drop-in booster events is to relieve some of the increasing demand on our providers and pharmacies by providing at least a few thousand booster doses for the community as we go into, uh, the, the remainder of the holiday season and before the new year. We're so grateful for both Samaritan and OSU, and I'm so proud of our Benton County teams who have all jumped in to make this happen during the holidays. And this week, we're already two clinics in of the seven we have, uh, scheduled. These are focused on the five to 11-year-olds, and specifically, uh, for the first few rounds of clinics, they target, uh, youth with barriers to, to access. and specifically for the first few rounds of clinics, they target youth with barriers to access. In the short amount of time since vaccines have opened to 5 to 11-year-olds, 37% of all Benton County children in this age group have had at least a single dose of vaccine, and 11% have received both doses of the pediatric Pfizer vaccine. I want to give you a brief example of vaccine equity in action. This is something I'm particularly proud of our teams and our community for. As you all know, from the early days of vaccination, we sought to build an infrastructure of COVID vaccination in provider offices and pharmacies because these are the places where vaccinations traditionally occur. When we prepared for 5 to 11-year-old vaccinations, our incredible immunizations coordinator Cindy DiAngelo worked with pediatrics and family practice offices to get most providers enrolled with a Samaritan hub. Still, we knew that when the first vaccines arrived, the demand would be high and the supply would be temporarily limited. Kids with ready access to providers would be able to get appointments there. But we knew that if we held 5 to 11 drop-in clinics right out of the gate, many of these convenience spots would be used by people who otherwise had access. So for our early 5 to 11-year-old clinics, we opted to return to an appointment-based, equity-focused system. We ran newspaper ads and social posts to urge people to check with their provider or pharmacy. We then shared our clinic appointment calendar with schools, with the school-based health centers, our FQHC, CPOs, and community partners serving disadvantaged groups. These partners could then fill appointments to ensure access for their underserved patients and clients. We also had direct scheduling through our call center as needed. Finally, any remaining appointments were released to the public a few days before an event. Our stellar epidemiologist, Peter Van Marw, provided an analysis demonstrating that Latinx children were more than twice as likely to have been vaccinated by Benton County Health Department-supported clinics compared to white children in Benton County. The data for other racial groups is smaller and therefore less useful for making inferences, but it supports the same trend. This percentage could be inflated somewhat because of the focused outreach for the school clinics, potentially redirecting some Latinx children who would have otherwise gone somewhere else, but does indicate the extremely important role that these clinics play in reaching diverse populations. So I'm so proud of our teams for conducting this work and so proud of our partners as well. It's a lot of work on everyone's part, but the data show that it's well worth all the effort. I want to move on to talk about Omicron variant really briefly. I'm sure most of us are, most of you have heard a lot about it. For the past few weeks, we've been learning a lot about this new SARS-CoV-2 variant of concern. It's concerning because early reports suggest that it could either be more transmissible and/or it may evade some immune parameters possibly, including antibodies produced by vaccination. Now, we still don't have a lot of information about the Omicron variant. In the days after initial discovery, we learned of cases in many areas of the world. Virologists and immunologists are working diligently to understand the potential impacts of the new variant. And, you know, in the meantime, as we learn more, this news isn't wholly unexpected as we know that viruses continue to mutate as long as they continue to have hosts. The good news is that we have public health tools that we know are effective at limiting transmission. Our message to everyone, it isn't changing too much. The best way to be protected is to be fully vaccinated and to get your booster shot when you're eligible. Again, two months at Johnson &amp; Johnson and six months past the second dose if someone received Pfizer or Moderna. Masks, masking indoors, also very important. It really works to reduce transmission. We urge everyone to continue to use caution when interacting with people outside of their household. When having a gathering this holiday season, there are things you can do to reduce risks. Consider knowing the vaccination status of attendees of gatherings. Ask everyone to be tested beforehand if you can invest in some rapid tests and engage in outdoor activities or at least open windows to improve ventilation. I guess that's all I have today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there questions for April?
Yeah, I guess just what you said there at the end, April of getting to know the vaccination status of people that you're interacting with. I was just up in Portland yesterday in a business leadership summit meeting, and vaccination, proof of vaccination was required. And then it was an indoor event, so masking. And it seemed like compliance was very good on the masking part. People were taking that seriously. And I suggested to the Association of Oregon County folks that were there that perhaps AOC, if we're having in-person meetings, have proof of vaccination as required to be at the meeting. And I was, I guess, pleasantly surprised that that idea was not rejected out of hand. And so I appreciate you mentioning that and that vaccinations are still our best defense against whatever is coming. And I guess, other than that, I appreciate the update and the numbers. And hopefully, the 69% vaccination rate in Benton County is gradually improving. And we really appreciate your efforts and being flexible and instead of just, well, this is how we always do it, approach that, trying to figure out how to reach the hard-to-reach populations that we have. I guess all I can say is keep it up and appreciate the update.
Commissioner Wise.
April, do you know, is there any guidance for booster doses for people who have had breakthrough cases? You know, is there any amount of time that they should wait after having a breakthrough case?
That's a good question, Commissioner Wise. The guidance states that, you know, to speak with your provider if you want that individual, if a person wants that individual guidance. However, there's no contraindication once out of the isolation period for a booster dose, as long as it's been that two months for J and J or six months otherwise.
Okay, that's good to know. I've just been hearing some rumors out there, so it's good to know.
Thanks.
Thank you, April. To you and your teams who have been working so hard on all of these clinics and discussing the equity issues when it comes to vaccination. I had the good fortune to tour Lincoln Elementary last night to see our vaccine clinic there in action. And it looked like it was well attended, studied through the books. So keep up all that good work. Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner. April, the question I have is regarding the lab reporting errors that you shared at the beginning of your discussion. Can you elaborate a little bit more on those and how those may have occurred and what's been done to ensure that that doesn't continue to happen?
I can share the information that I do have, Joe. Thanks for the good question. One of our, one of the laboratories that serves Benton County and many other counties had a staffing error, basically a manual error in entering positive and negative lab reports through a file transfer protocol. And basically, it wasn't received by any county, went into a null place. People at OHA found the error, and as soon as they did, they contacted the lab and ensured not only that the manual error would be corrected through immediate training, but also that they put in something in place to check for those not fully transmitted lab reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. This shows that we can always learn. And mistakes are usually the way we do it. Okay, well, thank you for all of that. Much appreciate the update. It's always good to have the local context after reading all of the national and global news. So thank you for all your work. At this point, we will move on to item 4.2 to discuss amendments to supplemental budget number 2061. And Jen Angel, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. I will try to be thorough yet brief, since I know you are running behind schedule this morning. I would ask that within the document that I sent as an attachment, you turn to page four, which looks something like this. There are a couple of things that are a little tricky within this due to some internal fund movement, and I think it will be easier to follow along with the actual numbers rather than just the bullet points.
Can I ask a question real quick? Is it possible to screen share that? That way, anyone who's watching who's interested can see it.
I certainly can do that, and it'll actually make it a little easier so I can kind of look at you guys and still look at the document. So if Stephanie could make me presenter. All right. There we go. Let me move this out of the way. Okay, can everybody see my screen? All right. So the first fund we are requesting amendment to is the general fund. And in here, there is a reduction in materials and supplies in the CARES Cost Center and the FEMA Cost Center of $1,125,000. We are reducing that appropriation authority in order to establish transfer authority to Fund 514 for some of the remaining costs on Phase 2 of the Calipuya Building remodel. So that just establishes a transfer authority that did not exist at this point. Additionally, we are increasing appropriation authority, $80,913. Within the public safety operations, there was a Homeland Security grant received after budget adoption, and that is for a radio infrastructure assessment and improvement plan for responder agencies within the area. Go to the next page. Next up would be the health operations. We need to establish essentially budget authority to spend the rollover funds from the 1921 biennium that were COVID funds and therefore restricted in use. Normally, this particular cost center in public health doesn't carry a beginning balance, but due to the nature of the funding, we do need to establish that. We are increasing personal services for the DOC staffing that would previously be paid under FEMA. And there are some increases in materials and services for COVID testing and other miscellaneous supplies related to the COVID function. Last action within the general fund is to increase the law enforcement overtime reimbursement in justice services operations. Again, due to the effects of COVID-19, the program was allowed to carry over more than the standard 10% of restricted balance. So we have increased the beginning balance to reflect the actual funds available and then increased that overtime reimbursement per the grant agreement. Are there any questions on the general fund before I move on? All right. Here's one that gets a little tricky, the American Rescue Plan Fund. First of all, let me say, we are within the main cost center of the American Rescue Plan Fund reducing materials and supplies, $2,780,000. What that allows us to do is create a $1.28 million transfer to Fund 514, which will also be going to work on the Calipuya Building. And then it also establishes an, essentially, an internal fund transfer. We created some new cost centers within this fund to separate out some of the upcoming projects, and I will describe them briefly in a moment. So what we're doing here is taking $1.5 million of the American Rescue Plan Fund that is just in the main cost center, and then we are moving that to the newly established cost center for the Crisis Respite Center. So what essentially this whole transfer entails is we created the transfer to move the discretionary ARPA revenue to Fund 514 for the Phase 2 remodel. And then we're also asking to create appropriation authority for projects that were approved under Senator Gelsner for Senate District 8, the Benton County wildfire evacuation routes, which were $350,000, radio repeaters for local fire department and EMS, in the total of $250,000. And then the food hub for South Corvallis Economic Development, which is $550,000. So most of the funding will be new within this cost center for those projects, and then we just essentially moved some of the funds around into a new cost center going forward to keep all the projects and their funding in one force. Are there any questions? Yes.
In that explanation, I think the one thing that is not clear is that that $1.5 for the Crisis Center, that was Rep. Ray Field's.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Wanted to clarify that so we don't, we don't not credit his work.
I think that you are spot on, Commissioner, and I think I managed to capture it in the bullet points but not in this piece. So thank you for that. Yes, that would be Representative Ray Field's contribution, and we definitely do not want to miss the credit for that. Aside from that, are there any other questions on the American Rescue Plan Funds? Oh, yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, on the radio, is that radio repeaters for fire department and EMS, $250,000? Who receives those funds?
We receive the fundings, and then we are passing them through, I believe, to the City of Corvallis Fire Department. That is my understanding. I don't know if Mary or Rick has any other additional information that they could share on that.
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Rick. Apologize, my camera's not working here this morning. But yes, Jen's absolutely correct in that this money would be passed to the City of Corvallis both for the fire district contribution as well as the food assistance. And we've already made contact with the City of Corvallis to begin working through intergovernmental agreement on those.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the special grant fund. This one also includes an internal transfer, so it's important that. it's important that we look at the numbers rather than just the bullet points. So first, we are establishing budget for the micro enterprise grant. This was established in the prior biennium, but not rolled forward as the funds were never received, and I completely will fully admit to missing ruling that. In addition, we are establishing a transfer from Benton Opportunity Funds to Housing Assistance for Increased Community Services Consortium Administrative Costs. So essentially, what we're doing here is, one, if you see the pass-through contracts of $150,000, we are establishing that as the new revenue source for that micro enterprise grant. And then we are reducing materials and supplies within the Benton Opportunity Fund Cost Center, and we are then transferring that to the Housing Assistance Cost Center that we created, and that increases then that pass-through amount to the consortium for those additional costs. So this one is an internal fund transfer. We are just essentially moving it from one cost center to another, and then establishing that additional appropriation authority. Are there any questions on that one? No? Okay. Intergovernmental Services Fund. Within this, we are increasing the appropriation authority in capital outlay for the Cala Puya remodel on Phase Two. Funding for that project is coming from the transfers from the discretionary ARPA funding, and then reimbursed payroll costs from CARES and FEMA. That was a transfer from the general fund. So that would be $2.4 million, a little more than that, that we are asking to make that adjustment. And again, all that revenue, as you can see up at the top, comes from transfers from Fund 001 and 107. And then one more additional adjustment is the law enforcement did receive their award from the Bureau of Justice Authority for their bulletproof vest replacement program. So we are asking to increase the appropriation authority within public safety for that amount of $7,600 in additional funding that they are going to receive. Are there any questions on that? Yes, Commissioner Malone?
Not on this one, on the previous one, the dollars to finish the Cala Puya.
Oh, okay.
Remodel. Is that Phase One or Phase Two?
My understanding is that is for the Phase Two portion.
Okay. That's what I thought, but it wasn't clear, so I thought I'd ask. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then lastly, we have the Benton Health Center Fund. This fund has received HERSA funding for the Data Warehouse Project of $614,972. The estimated cost of the project is $875,000. So we have increased capital outlays at $875,000 and reduced contingency in the amount of And that is the portion of the county's funding that is expected to contribute to the project to make that $875,000. Are there any questions on that? Okay, well, thank you very much. That is all the movement of this supplemental budget, and that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. So this will come back to us on a business meeting schedule, and we will do it at bedtime.
I have it scheduled for public hearing on December 21st.
Excellent. So after that public hearing, then we'll adopt. I, so if anyone does have questions, there's time to reach out to Jen and to Rick to ask those. Thank you very much, Jen, for doing that in a rapid-fire way. I would like to ask at this point for a three-minute break to take us to 10:15, at which time we'll pick up with the Fairgrounds Master Plan. And it looks like we are going to have to defer item 4.4 until after our public hearing at 11:00, public hearings. So, welcome to all of you folks associated with the item 4.3. We'll be back with you momentarily. And if you want to make me present her in the meantime, I'll get everything ready.
There are about 50 some people that have.
In.
And, get this, it's scheduled for 10:30, they moved it up to 10:15. I know, aren't they sweet?
Hey, folks, I would just like to make sure everyone knows that we can hear folks speaking, so if you were intending to have your phone or computer on mute, they are not.
Introductions to our guests, and get us going.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I am joined today by two representatives of LRS Architects, so I will go ahead and have them introduce themselves and give you just a quick summary of their company before we get started.
Yes, good morning. This is Steve Mylan. Thank you for welcoming us this morning. We really appreciate your time. It's very valuable. We're thrilled to be working with Benton County on this project, and by way of introduction, I've got with me Wayne Goze, who is going to be our project manager on these two buildings. A little background on LRS Architects. We were the architects for the Lynn County Fair and Expo Center over in Albany. Thank you. Oh, there's our picture, look at that, which we did about, actually, over about 25 years ago at this point, but still serves as a standard around the region for Fairgrounds area, Fairgrounds project. We also completed, there another, next image, Lynn, the Central Washington State Fair Park Master Plan up in Yakima, next. And we just completed this year the Winxband Conference and Events Center up in Hillsborough, Oregon, which is a 90,000-square-foot expo hall, conference facilities, banquet facilities, and meeting rooms for them. It's sitting on the Fairgrounds property right next to the airport there, and you can see it sort of has an aviation-type theme to it. And next. Before we get into this, we've also done an event center for Douglas County. We're currently working with the Oregon State Fair and Expo Center on some renovations of some buildings over in Salem, and have done master plans for Tillamook County, Clockmouth County, Washington County, Plamette County, Lake County, Lincoln County, et cetera, et cetera. So we hopefully have a lot of experience we can bring to your projects, but as always, we're willing to learn and really customize this to what you need for your facilities. Okay, Lynn, why don't we just go right to the projects themselves?
Yes, I will do some quick context, and we'll dive right in, just in case anyone, any of the public's listening, just give a little background. In March 2019, the Board of Commissioners approved and updated facilities' master plans for the Benton County Event Center and Fairgrounds. COVID slowed us down a bit, but during the last two years, staff has accomplished a few of the smaller projects on the master plan list, including taking down the sides of the Old Pony Barns and converting them into RV storage to generate revenues, and closing the solar building and installing a commercial kitchen. Now that the courts have left the auditorium and returned to the courthouse, we're gearing up to complete the auditorium upgrades, including building the equipment closet, refinishing the floors, installing the sinks in the bathroom, and upgrading the bar. So now we are ready to tackle two of these larger projects in the master plan, and that is converting the existing indoor arena into an exhibit hall and covering the outdoor arena so it can be used year-round. And the RFP for Architectural Services was awarded to LRS Architects, and we have begun work on the design phase of the two facilities. So in October, we did hold two stakeholder meetings, a public meeting, and presented the design concepts to the Corvallis and the Fair Foundation. And then county staff met LRS Architects, the Lynn County Expo Center, and toured their exhibit hall with the director, Randy Porter. And then in November, Stephen Wayne from LRS came down to Corvallis and met with the Fair Board during their retreat to get input on the designs as well. So what we are presenting to you today are the designs resulting from the input of these various meetings that we've had through October and November. So I will pull up, let's, magic of technology, I will pull up the exhibit hall. And so I will pass this on to Steve and Wayne for discussion.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate the introduction. And I do want to say that the plan changed a lot from the time we first presented something to the stakeholder groups to what we're showing you today. We heard a lot of different things, and we think we've incorporated most of them, but it certainly can be modified as needed. But this is the plan looking down at the existing Benton Arena, which will become the new exhibit hall. And as you see on the very left, there's an area, a line that says "existing" there. Lynn, can you, do you have active mouse on that, too? Kind of show where we're talking about?
Which one are you talking about?
We're just showing the outline of the existing building. Yeah. Your mouse again says.
Yes, because it, yeah, it's along this line that is the existing wall, and so we're adding, we're pushing out to the meeting rooms and the bathrooms. Yes.
Exactly. Thank you. The initial concept, the initial concept was to try to incorporate it all within the building, but from what we heard and from everybody, is that we really need meeting rooms to accommodate these, or excuse me, to complement these exhibit halls, because many of the events that are coming require both exhibit space and meeting space or breakout space. And so as a result of those, and in meeting with the Fair Board, we decided to go ahead and pursue looking at additional meeting rooms outside of the existing footprint of the building. So those are the two pink spaces you see, meeting room A and B. In addition to that, as we started looking at a preliminary code interpretation of this, we need a lot of new restrooms on this, in this facility. You can imagine going from an equestrian facility that has a few riders at a time and a few people in the bleachers to a fully packed exhibit hall space with potential banquets and meetings and lectures and things, that we're going to have a lot more occupants in this building. And by code, as is straight off of a table, we have a certain number of facilities that are required in the men's rooms and women's rooms, and so we've tried to accommodate those here. And rather than trying to accommodate those within the existing footprint, we saw an opportunity to push those outside the footprint to maximize the amount of exhibit hall space, in other words, gaining a lot more rentable area, and then still providing what's needed for code. So those are the two areas marked "men and women" in gray outside the existing building. The advantage to all this is by moving that outside the existing building, the whole eastern side of that building, which is currently in the building, is the concrete slab, if you've been in there, becomes a long lobby space, which is fantastic for breakout from the exhibit halls as they break out at different times, and intermingling between events and between the meeting rooms and the exhibit halls, all in one contiguous space. In addition, we have a concessions hall located right in the middle, and Lynn, maybe you can point that one out, it's purple in the middle just on the east side. Thank you. Yes. A small concession space to serve refreshments for people. And so then the lobby also has some tables and chairs and different kinds of furniture configurations that allow people to relax and enjoy those beverages and food functions. One of the other opportunities that came up as we talked about this was the opportunity that the area to the north, or to the left on this drawing, could be used for food trucks, which could be parked out there. And so we want to make sure we had a really nice connection between the lobby space to the food trucks. And so that area is marked as a covered entry up there, and there's a vestibule, allows free flow of people between the lobby space and potential food trucks so that other food options besides what's served in concession stands could serve the people in the expo halls. On the east, I should say, south side of the building, which is the right side, over in the corner, there's a small blue square marked TKTS, and that is your main entrance to the building from the parking lot. So the parking, the south parking is off to the right of this drawing. People would approach from the right to the left into the area marked "covered entry", and that would be some kind of a canopy type area, somewhere, some kind of covering. They would come to the covered canopy and go up to the ticket booth, to that TKTS space, where they could buy tickets to the event from the outside. There's also a window on the other side of the tickets to the inside, should that be a need for any of the promoters, the show promoters, in that space. So the ticket has both outside and interior access with windows, and a vestibule, the BEST to the left of that marks where people would actually come into that facility. So the primary entry to the building is from the right up in the parking, to the covered entry, down through the vestibule, and into the lobby space. And directly opposite that lobby, the vestibule and lobby space, we've got a wall that we're trying to preserve for information so people can get oriented when they first come in there, and might have an agenda for the day, or who's speaking, or some information on that. And then there's furniture within the lobby space for seating, as we talked about before. Each of the exhibit halls, there's three of them there, you see, in sort of an orange color, a yellow, and a green, Hall A, B, and C, total about 27,500 square feet. They have to have a number of different exits from each space, from each code, which will have to be added to the existing structure. And the idea is that the lines of delineation between these halls would actually be a curtain that could be retracted, so that if they're retracted, any two or all three of those exhibit halls could be contiguous and serve for an event. And Lynn has told us that we will, we don't anticipate having more than one event at a time. a time in here, so there would not be a need for competing, having competing events there and any kind of acoustic considerations between events. But the idea of these final curtains, and it's what's been used at Lynn County, is that it provides a contained area approximately to the size of the event that's being shown there, so that you don't have, for instance, 40 exhibit booths in an area that's five times bigger than that, and people appear lost. You want to have a small contained area that's very active and very energized. So we have partitions that would come up the lines between the different colors, and Lynn, maybe you can show that too, where the drapes, if we will, the curtains would come, they'd come up and retract there and could divide those spaces off. Now, the wall between the exhibit hall and the lobby space would be a hard wall. And this was a change that came by from the stakeholders requesting a nice delineation there that provide good acoustics and also a physical separation from the lobby space so that could be, help control the sound. And the other idea that came up is that the wall that delineates those two would go up part height in that space and then would have a lid on it over top of the lobby. And that lid over the lobby would be what we call an equipment platform. It's kind of like a mezzanine, and it's a place where we would put all the mechanical equipment for the building, rather than putting it on the roof, which would help lengthen the lifespan of that equipment. And then also on there, we would have access from the exhibit hall space for, with some openings on top of that, onto that equipment platform for storage. So it'd be a place that we could store some of the tables and chairs and podiums and things like that that are used in these existing spaces, as well as, you know, curtains and other type amenities, or other type equipment that would be needed in that space. So the existing area is that rectangle we showed you earlier, and then it'd all be a new area, new addition, off to east of that, going towards the existing barn that's there, still preserving some space between the two, and access all the way around the building. Wayne, did you have anything else that you want to add on?
We do have a question in the chat. They were asking about an all gender restroom or a mixed gender restroom. Might want to point that out.
Thank you. Yes, that's great. So along with the concessions rooms that line, there's a series of small rooms that line the lobby. And that, going left or to the north from the concessions room, we have an IT and audiovisual room for the equipment. We have an office, which was requested, it's a show office. So the promoter, whoever's running the show, has a place to kind of land and register and kind of coordinate the show. To the left of that is, we have a symbol that just says T, and that stands for a toilet, and that would be a gender neutral toilet room or family restroom that'd be provided just for that purpose. I'm glad they raised that question. I didn't cover that. Then there's the opening that allows you access into the restrooms. And by the way, the two restrooms have access from the inside, but also from the outside. Where Lynn's pointing right now, those represent doors, and those are outside doors that allow access into the restrooms, so that the facility could be locked off on the inside, but allow access from the outside for other events that might be going on during the fair. So it serves a dual purpose. Then back down to the entry, we have a janitor's closet, J A N on the plan. And to the left of that is some storage space for some of the more frequently used equipment in that space. And then finally, to the left of that is the fire riser room, and that would be relocated from the existing one, which currently blocks where the proposed vestibule would be. We're looking to relocate that. Thank you, Wayne, for that. Lynn, any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that in the master plan, they actually called for these breakout rooms to be on the north side, but after looking at the facility and having some stakeholder discussions, we discussed that it would work better to go on the east because then it could feed from the lobby. And also because I do have over here poles that we use for football camping, you know, there are RV hookups that generate revenues along this line. And there are also the hookups for the food carts, because a lot of the public events that I have out here want to run food carts these days. So we had decided that we do have space on this side, and it actually logistically worked better for people to enter from this side and be able to access the meeting rooms from the lobby here, instead of having to have them go out here and walk all the way around to the north end of the building. And then that might impact, and we might lose some of our poles here that would support the food cart. So we did, so the original master plan did have additional breakout rooms, but we just moved to the east.
With respect to the sound-
Thank you. This is the plan that the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
With respect to the sound curtains, curtains between halls, I understand that we wouldn't be renting to multiple groups at a time, but sometimes a group wants to have more than one thing going on at the same time. And are those high enough quality that there can be a speaker in each of two rooms and they don't interfere with one another?
The curtains, we're somewhat limited by the structure. Normally, we'd love to put in some modern full partitions or what we call air walls in there, which provide a great sound attenuation between the spaces. In this case, we have an existing structure that cannot support that without a lot of additional steel and foundations and things like that. So we are limited to just using the curtains at this point. They don't provide a lot of acoustic separation, and Lynn can maybe talk about that. If a group came in and wanted to have a scenario like that, that maybe they use Hall A and Hall C, with a little bit of space in between, because the sound does attenuate over space between distance.
Yeah, because the main goal of exhibit hall is when we have a renter who does want this large, more open space. So, you know, if they want a smaller space, I can certainly put them into the auditorium or they can push towards these meeting rooms. We will have air walls between the two meeting rooms so that it can be opened up to bigger space or be kept as two separate. But yeah, the idea of the exhibit hall is to just maintain that large piece of concrete for the various events that we have. So that's why we're kind of, we're not worried so much about the air walls because it's just financially, they're just not feasible for the large exhibit hall space. So we're just putting in the curtains just as, I have a curtain in the auditorium, same thing. They just pull it if they want to just visually limit, you know, shrink the space. So that's, we're just doing it at a larger level here. Thank you.
If I could add also, I'm sorry, if I could add also, what we're looking to do at this point is preserve the appearance of those beautiful bowstring trusses up in the ceiling. And not, if we can, not put a straight lid in there, but allow those to go up and still be seen, and then treat the ceiling with insulation as needed. But in order to provide a little bit of acoustics between the two, we'll have some kind of, hopefully make some kind of a clear paneling or something alongside the trusses so you can still see the trusses, but there'd be a little bit of acoustic separation between the two, on those, the lines between the colors.
Thank you. And our, and our sound person, our sound company, Live Sound, Paul Kincaid, has been involved in our stakeholder meetings and has been really great to work with Stephen Wayne on discussions because he, he has recently done a concert in that, in the arena as it stands now, and knows how physical it is. So we are discussing how to address acoustics as we move forward with our step company.
Steve, could you touch on the number of occupants for meeting room A and meeting room B?
Yes, I have to go, I believe there's about, it depends on the situation, of course, but I believe, oh, excuse me, one second, let me just take a quick look here. I believe we have about, oh, here we go. Meeting room A is for, by code, which is seven square feet per occupant, is 164 occupants. However, that would be standing room only, and by code, that means that, you know, that's the maximum number you could have in there. Meeting room B would be 118 occupants, standing room only. The reality is, meeting room B is a 30 by 26, it's about the size of a normal classroom. And so you kind of envision the number of occupants might have there. So depending on whether you had, if you put banquet tables in there, or classroom seating, or just lecture seating, there'd be different occupancies. But we can get that information to you once we start a layout. Other questions?
Yeah, I've got one on, you mentioned the trusses and acoustics, and I guess I've had some conversations with people that aren't that thrilled with being able to view the trusses. And so I would, I guess, like to have some notion of cost and compromise if, if the trusses are viewable or not.
We can certainly look at it both ways, if requested. That's not a problem. And we'll look at costs, obviously, both ways as well. Good?
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, because that was one of my questions as to the impacts on the HVAC is to whether we leave the open ceiling or we put a drop-in ceiling, because there's a lot of cost involved too in putting the drop-in ceiling in. So, but what's the efficiency for the HVAC? So we'll be moving forward and looking at those two options. And we are going to, I think, Steve, aren't we setting up the HVAC that each of these three sections can be controlled separately? So if they do want to hold a curtain, then they could kind of control the HVAC into just one or two of the sections.
And Lynn, do you want to mention the trusses at the state fair that you saw in the building?
Oh, well, yeah, because there's that exhibit hall that's got those same sort of open beams, and they've stained them dark, and the ceiling is white. And it's just, I love that, that space. And the director of the state fair ground said renters love it. They walk in, they love that open beam ceiling. It's really aesthetically pleasing to them. So it's, and we've seen the open beams in some of the other arenas that I've, the other areas that I've been to, exhibit halls. So it's just something that, if it's something that will appeal to renters and aesthetically, then I'm happy to look at keeping them. I just want to make sure it's not going to cause us some, you know, a lot more cost down the line for the HVAC side. So we'll just look at both options and see what makes sense for us.
Yeah, thank you, Beth. Any other questions on exhibit hall? Anything in the chat, Wayne?
Otherwise, we'll switch the arena if everyone's ready.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything additional in the chat.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne.
Then I'm going to turn the arena.
That's pretty.
I love llamas. And as an archaeologist, a lot of my, okay, so here we go, arena plan.
Thank you. Do you want to preface this, Lynn, and then I'll go into the actual details?
Yes, so this is the, our existing outdoor arena, and we, the challenge of this is the drainage. It's, since it's uncovered, it's just a swamp most of the year. And so we effectively use this space for the three rodeos during fair, and that's it. Otherwise, this arena just sits empty. And so it was one of the discussions in the master plan is how can we more effectively use this space for a small fairground? And this is a lot of geography to waste, you know, if you can't use it year round. So one of the calls for the master plan was to cover this and also to add, here it is, and add a new restroom between the arena and the solar building because this restroom would cover, would serve both of these facilities. Because now that the solar building is enclosed, I have a lot more interest in people renting that space, but they want bathrooms out there, which I understand. So we're looking at putting this restroom between these two facilities and so it can support both of those activities. And we had a stakeholder meeting, and our stakeholders had shown interest in a very robust arena for rodeo. You know, rodeo needs a lot of infrastructure. You know, you have bucking shoots and roping shoots and livestock and things like that. So the arena kind of grew to a very large size, and then during the Fair Board, we kind of pared it back to a middle of the road. The design is more than just covering the arena, but it's less than the Thunderdome that came out of the original stakeholder meeting that we just looked at, that it, we just can't, you know, it's getting too expensive. It's just not going to be feasible for us financially. So this, I think this design is a nice compromise of being able to provide the services that rodeo and equine needs without, without making the facility so exorbitantly expensive that, you know, it's not conceivable. So I'll pass this on to Steve and let him talk about the design.
Great, thank you, Lynn. A great preface. The covered area is the area that has sort of a gray background. So if you can see from grids one to grid three, that would be the area that'd be initially covered. And Lynn, maybe you can kind of outline the footprint of that, just to give them a sense of what this would look like. So at the top left, just basically what's covered, what has a gray, light gray background to it? Thank you, yes, perfect. So that would be the covered structure, if you will. And based on, rather than fully enclosing the building, which would then trigger certain occupancy issues, mechanical issues, heating, and things like that, what was really needed was a screening for the wind and the weather that comes from the southwest. So we will have walls on this on the west side and on the south side, which is the left and the bottom, as Lynn's pointing out. And that's not dissimilar from the Oregon State Fair Warm-Up Arena, which we did a few years ago, which has walls in certain areas and the large openings on the ends and the north side. And it works well for the equestrian riders especially. So this is the general building, and the area to the south, as Lynn had pointed out earlier, is the restroom facilities. Thank you, Lynn. With women's and men's room with outdoor access, so you could access it either from people using the covered arena or using the solar building to the south, which is on the bottom of this drawing. Back to the arena, the whole space, most of the space would be dirt except for the bottom 20%, which is a darker gray rectangle, which would just have a concrete slab on it. Similar to what you see in the current Benton Arena. That provides a nice usable, easy maintenance area to bring bleachers in, have vendors, have the people walk, and certainly provide accessibility. So that's the concrete slab area, and on that concrete slab area, you'll see some blue areas, and that's the raised bleachers. At the top of that, the white area is a raised, just a raised platform at about three feet above the arena floor. And then as you go down on the drawing, you have the bleacher seating that goes up and is elevated down there. And the total bleacher area provides almost 700, seating for 700 people approximately, just under 700 people. The idea, if the whole thing was totally enclosed and built, and ideal, they were looking for potentially up to 1,000 seats. So we were actually pleased to get, to even squeeze 700 seats in this facility as it is shown. To the west of those bleachers, actually, I'll describe, so the bleachers are accessed with stairs on the left side of the white rectangle. So you go up from the concrete slab up to the bleachers. You walk all the way across the bleachers and then down stairs on the right side, back down to the concrete platform. There's also, right where she has a cursor, the start of a ramp from the lower level that snakes its way up from the concrete, and maybe follow that trail up and then down and then back up. It basically provides an ADA accessible ramp up to that same elevated bleacher area. And then in the bleacher area, the front row of one of those sections is all levels, provide seating for wheelchairs, right in there. Thank you, yes. Approximately on the center on the, on the arena. Back down to the left, on the bottom left of the drawing, there's an area, and that's going to be a great area for the participants and such to come and check in. And in the very southwest, the bottom left corner, is an office, a show, again, a promoter's office or show office. It's a lot for registration for events or somebody who's promoting the show. And then to the right of that, there's more systems type requirements for electrical and IT and data and things like that, fire risers. On the right side of the bleachers, we have a concession stand shown. It's a small concession, it's kind of like what you find at a high school, with a counter on the right side, which faces the concrete slab area, which allows plenty of space for queuing for people coming there. And this could provide some refreshments for people attending that event. Outside of the arena, we have areas in dashed lines for return shoots on the right side, livestock shoots on the north side, and then on the left side are roping shoots. And then on the north side also, but undercover, partly undercover is, oop, there we go, are bucking shoots, and so we're trying to accommodate all of those. And the lines, you can see some little, if you look closely, some eye-shaped forms- And the lines, you can see some little, if you look closely, some eye-shaped forms. Those are the concrete steel columns that would come up and form this pre-manufactured metal building. In the future, we have a dark black dashed line to the north that could indicate future covering for the livestock and even potentially future bleachers if needed, if the demand grows. But initially, when it's not being used for the livestock pens, that could be used for temporary parking for people, for instance, at a dog show or something like that, where they can park close to the arena floor and have access to it. The arena itself would have a small, like a Powder River-type gate around it with openings, gates on each end and on the north side into the chutes. And there's still adequate space between the arena and the Gerber Hall and RV storage. And Lynn, I think, I should mention that the arena space is almost exactly the size we're proposing as what is there now, which is about the minimum that the promoters have said they can handle. We just don't have the space on the site to expand it much more. As you see, we're close to Gerber Hall and RV storage on the right, and we're close on the left side to the property line, and we have to provide fire truck access all around this building. So we maximize it where we could and provided a facility that seems to meet what we're hearing back in the stakeholder meeting and fairboard. Lynn, do you want to chime in with anything else?
I would just point out that the master plan does call for a livestock pavilion north of the arena. So we are still planning long-term to be able to put that in this area north of that space. But otherwise, I think it's a good compromise.
I would say that's on the future image. I think we had that as our last image, don't we?
Is that the last? Oh, there you are! Ta-da! Okay, yes, future livestock. So, yeah, so that's, we're planning for the future expansion up into that area. But I think it's a good compromise to still support rodeo activities and equine facilities, but also make it reasonable for costing the construction.
And if you go to the next image, I think it has the sort of aerial overlay, just to put it in context. There we go. So that would be the, which is kind of grayed out, that would be the pre-manufactured metal building structure, and you can kind of see ghosted out the arena space, the bleachers and everything within it, and how it sits in the fairgrounds with the solar building, the RV storage, and Gerber Hall. I welcome any questions.
Lynn, in terms of the master plan overall, I don't remember exactly what the long-term vision is for RV stores, but I think it was going to move from that location. What kind of phase would that occur?
Yeah, the RV storage would move from the current livestock sheds to the pavilion. So once the pavilion's built, then it will move back there. And so that was the plan for that, to be RV storage for September 1st through June 30th. And then, like we do now, we clear out all the RV storage, and this would become 4H for fair.
Got it, thank you.
And then at that point, we would remove one of the old RV storage sheds over here. But it'd be nice to get, move the RV storage out of this space because it is, it's good path of income, but it's right in the middle of everything. So it'd be kind of nice to get it pushed off, you know, a little out of, out of the line of, out of right in the middle of everything. Yes, that's the goal.
Beth? Yes, Beth? Yeah, a couple questions here, let's see. For the arena, I like the idea of phases and that instead of trying to do, get everything done in one fell swoop and one funding phase, that to figure out the, kind of the minimum needed and then proceed from there. Refresh my memory, Lynn, how many rodeos per year do we do now? And what would be the potential going forward if we had a better facility?
Right now, we do the three nights of rodeo during fair and Howell Productions does about four winter rodeos per year. So we do about seven nights of rodeo per year. And so we would certainly hope to be able to expand that if we have an arena available. But, you know, I don't think we're ever going to be the facility that, you know, that's the rodeo center. We kind of hope Paloma Thrawick becomes that. So we want to be able to support our rodeo, but the main focus of the arena, I think, really is the equine activities, otherwise, you know, the 4H, the Oset, you know, being able to do barrel racing and, because not just rodeo, but we have, we have barrel racing activities and things, prepping for the rodeo. So we probably do, you know, a dozen of those throughout the year in preparation. We have goat tying classes and things like that. So the rodeo will be supporting a lot of these other activities, not just the prime rodeo.
Okay, and I'm remembering, I didn't have a chance to find it, but you did a kind of cost analysis, I believe it was 2019, for equine events in the current facility. And correct me if I'm not correct, but the annual subsidy was in the neighborhood of $20,000 per year? Am I in the ballpark on that?
Yes, and that's, and a lot of that because we do 4H as a comp program, so those users are not paying to use the facility.
And obviously, that's for paid-for building. So if you added any building cost to that budget, it would be a larger subsidy.
Yes. Yeah, that's why we want to kind of pare down the original design so that it could be more reasonably built.
I was there when things were being added and bleachers all around, and so glad to see, you know, maybe a little reality has taken place. One suggestion, and I think I mentioned to you before, Lynn, is, you mentioned stakeholder groups and getting, you know, kind of design help. I think out of that, there may be a need for a committee just to help with some of these questions, trusses on the exhibit hall. How valuable is that? Especially once we get information on what the initial cost might be and what the long-term cost of having the trusses visible versus some kind of drop ceiling. But it seemed like from the public engagement that there were some knowledgeable people that I think could guide this process versus, kind of like the arena showed, if you turn advocates loose, things can escalate and develop, which last, I guess, along those lines I'd mentioned a couple years ago when we were discussing the exhibit hall and the arena, that the arena supporters were talking about fundraising and helping with funding some of the improvements to the arena. And I would hope that we don't lose track of those offers of financial help because just, we don't have the numbers, but this is, as far, as far as the arena, I can see the subsidy continuing for foreseeable future. And the exhibit hall, the idea there was that that potentially is a moneymaker for the county, in addition to providing meeting space and being an asset to the community. So I guess I'm interested in the, both these projects going forward in the design phase and then go back to the original idea of a sequence of doing the exhibit hall and then seeing what the costs are and what community support is for the improvements to the arena.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Malone, because we did decide to create a master plan subcommittee of the fairboard. And so we will officially, on December 20th, we will officially vote and organize that committee. And Rick Freeman, who's a fairboard member right now, he is actually in charge of CIP Projects for OSU, so he's very familiar with construction. He's an amazing board member to bring on board during this time, so he's agreed to head that committee up. So we will be looking at what committee members, what community members, you know, makes sense to, you know, bring to the table for that committee so that we can make sure that we're continuing to get that community voice. And somebody put in the chat about our neighbors considered a stakeholder group. At this point, the stakeholder meetings have been fairly limited to the renters. Like for the arena, it was the Lamont Dog Agility Group of the arena, it was 4H horses, it was, of course, rodeo committee. It was the different people who currently rent the arena on a fairly regular basis who are invited to the table. But we did have a public meeting, we will have another public meeting. Steve and Wayne and I will be organizing that and bringing these designs back to the public to get input. So please make sure if you're interested, be sure to reach out so I can make sure to get you the information on when those meetings are being held so that you can share your thoughts with us, because we really do want to make sure that these facilities serve our community.
Great, I appreciate the information on the subcommittee. And I guess the last thing I have, early on for the arena, drainage issues were mentioned, but no discussion of when that occurs and what, you know, just some of the details that are needed to, just because you cover the arena doesn't mean you've solved the drainage problems.
Yes, we do still have to address the drainage problems, and we are going to do a survey. You know, we're just talking about stormwater drainage and things like that. So we'll be continuing to work with Paul Wallsinger and all the relevant county staff to make sure that that is being addressed as we move forward.
Because that seems like that, maybe that might be one of the first things that we tackle for the arena to maybe extend the current facility's useful season.
Yes, and I know that drainage has been discussed for decades out there. I know it was discussed when I came here five years ago, Chris Vilenberg was discussing French drains and different things. So there's been a lot of discussion over the years about how to make that a more useful space around, but really getting it, so that's what we'll, but I think the combination of addressing drainage and covering it is really going to make it a useful facility. I think it's going to be really a nice facility for the horses and the dogs.
Great, this is an exciting project, and I'm looking forward to this next phase. Thank you.
With respect to commissioners, I, with respect, I know that Commissioner Wise has a question as well, but I wanted to tag on to the questions about the drainage of the site and just state that, I know that Mary's River Water Shed Council is always interested in anything that affects our local streams, and given the proximity to Denoye Creek, the fact that it's in the Denoye drainage there, I suspect they would be interested in also being considered a stakeholder and potentially working with this plan to ensure that whatever we do for drainage is something that is additive and beneficial from a habitat perspective and not just a technical fix. They have an MOU with Public Works right now to work on urban drainage issues, so this might be a good candidate project for that partnership. I don't know. But just a reminder that that capacity and expertise exists up in our nonprofit community.
Excellent. Well, yeah.
And I'm really pleased to see how far these ideas have come, thanks to the stakeholder groups and the LRS and to fairgrounds folks for bringing it this far and look forward to seeing the costing as we move forward. I know this is an item on which we need to take a vote, so, and we are at the 11 o'clock hour. So Commissioner Wise, I welcome your question and then would like to move this along.
Sure, thank you. So it appears that the fairboard recommended against moving forward with this phase. I was just wondering if you could summarize the fairboard's concerns that led to that recommendation?
Actually, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Wise. The recommendation was against moving forward with, Mark and Consulting is the one who did our original master plan. And the question came up is, because of COVID and everything that's going on in life, it's not the same. The question was, should we have Mark and Consulting go back and update the market demand study post-COVID to make sure that what the types of events and revenues we thought we could generate two years ago, do we think going forward that that is going to be the case? So Mark and Consulting submitted a proposal for, I think it was $11,500, to update the market demand part post-COVID and what we might see. The fairboard reviewed the proposal, and they recommended that we not invest that money because they don't think that really any consultants know what, there's just too many variables and uncertainty, and they don't think any consultant can really anticipate what rental life's going to look like on the other side. So they recommended that we not expend that money. So the question is if the commissioners also support that recommendation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for clarifying, that's helpful. And just since I'm thinking about it, what might be helpful in the future is if the minutes of that meeting were attached with this information, if those were available, because then I could just read it and wouldn't have to ask them.
Okay. Apologize, yes, if that was not a, during a retreat, so we actually didn't do minutes, it was kind of more of a discussion than, yeah, than minutes. But thank you, I will do that next time.
Okay, so the topic under consideration is not the Mark and Report. That was basically, you know, FYI, that the fairboard did not want to move forward with that analysis at this time, but the item here is moving ahead with the LRS architects to further refine the architectural design phase of the planning for the event center and fairgrounds at exhibit hall.
Is that a motion?
If you make it so.
Oh, I'll second that.
Not supposed to make motions as chair, but...
There's also a motion in the packet, if that would be preferable.
Well, no, no, you could, yes, I would accept a motion.
I'll move to direct staff and LRS architects to proceed with the architectural design phase of Benton County Event Center and Fairgrounds Exhibit Hall and Covered Area based on work session discussions.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of them, please, signify with an aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Okay, greatly appreciate the overview and discussion. I'm glad that stakeholder contributions have made a difference. I think it would be a good idea to invite neighbors to be involved as well, since they do have to live around the facility in 365 days of the year. But yes, thank you. Really appreciate this. Been curious for a while about where we're going and what's next.
Thank you, commissioners. Really appreciate the endorsement.
Okay. Next up is our public hearing. We have two public hearings today, but we also have the consent calendar to deal with. I'm going to go for the public hearing first. The first hearing is potential first reading and amending Benton County Code Chapter 31 enforcement. And that has to do with the need to incorporate additional language for the National Puni Discharge Elimination System enforcement components and to update other elements of Chapter 31. We have Gordon Kurtz here with us today to testify. All testimony must be directed directly to this topic of Chapter 31. Gordon will present a report and then any member of the public wishing to present testimony will give him, be given the opportunity to speak. And following that, any testimony from other government bodies will occur will be staff response. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Gordon Kurtz.
I don't necessarily have a report prepared, but this is our efforts to change the enforcement code are based on requirements that have been handed to us from the DEQ, which originated with the EPA. And what we're trying to do is to make our enforcement of such things as illicit discharges and violations of erosion and sediment control permits and that sort of thing homogeneous with other enforcement efforts throughout the county. And so our attempt is really to, is to provide language in Chapter 31 that both meets the needs of the requirements of the MPDS permit and also updates Chapter 31 at the same time to make it easier to understand and more applicable in other enforcement areas. So I think that's pretty much the synopsis. Greg, do you have anything to add to that?
I'll just mention a couple things. Thanks, Gordon, for that summary. So we held a work session with the Board of Commissioners earlier and went through the code language. The code that's proposed, the amendments that are proposed really do three things. One is to expand the definition of enforcement officers. So there's a broader number of positions that are identified as who can take enforcement action. Secondly, establishes a framework, and this is the part that was required by the EQ of us, creates an escalating enforcement framework or procedure. So that gives structure to our enforcement process. And then the third change was to add an additional tool for enforcement. It's actually kind of outside of enforcement per se, but it's a voluntary compliance agreement process. And that allows us to work with property owners or violators in a less punitive and less legalistic structure, but also puts clear expectations to that which then can be enforceable. So it's a voluntary process with consequences if it does not result in compliance. I think that covers the proposal. Do you have any questions, advisor of us or county council, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you guys have covered it succinctly and thoroughly.
Any questions from our fellow commissioners? Okay, are there any comments from the public? Are there any comments from any other governmental bodies on this topic? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing will now be closed and we will move on to consideration of the matter. Commissioner Malone, Commissioner Wise?
I don't have any questions and I'm ready to make a motion when we're ready.
Please.
All right, I move to conduct the first reading of ordinance number 2021-0307, 307, amending Chapter 31 of the Benton County Code.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Vance?
For the, before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code Chapter 31 enforcement, ordinance number 2021-0307. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners, Benton County ordains as follows. Short title amendments to Benton County Code Chapter 31 enforcement. And as usual with our code amendments, there will be a second reading scheduled for, looks like December 31st. And a reminder, that's not a public hearing, it's just a regular agenda item at which you confirm this ordinance. An ordinance takes effect 30 days from that second reading.
Just to be clear, Vance, did you say December 31st?
December 31st, I misspoke. It should have been 21st, December 21st. But we want you here on New Year's Eve, Greg, just in case.
I have plans. I will be out of the country.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to be there, Vance.
Might just be you and me, Pat.
Moving on then to public hearing number two in the matter of approving an annexation of territory into the Hoskins Kings Valley Rural Fire Protection District. And Joe Martis will be presenting the staff report on this item.
Morning commissioners. The petition was submitted to Benton County by Gerald Wieland and Louise Estrada. This is their property. If you notice on your location map or vicinity map, it's right on the border of Benton County and Polk County. They choose, they chose the Hoskins Kings Valley Rural Fire Protection District because of the station being closer to their house. That's the reason otherwise, because they were in the Polk County system, we wouldn't be talking about this, Polk County would have handled the annexation. But the two parties who own the property worked with the Hoskins Rural Fire Protection District. The protection district endorsed the petition, so their approval of the annexation along with the owner, which is 100%, so we're good there. Meets all the ORS 198 and ORS 478, which has to do with the Rural Fire Protection District. They would benefit from this protection and also meet our planning code because that's one of the things in our code that we like people to be into, a fire protection district can get protection. We're here to, of course, consider the boundary. As you can see on your map, it's right on the border of Benton County, Polk County.
Are there any questions for Joe? Okay, well, thank you for your report. I will now call for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this matter?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Hello, I'm Jerry Wyland. I'm one of the parties affected by this. Thank you, Joe Martis, for helping us with the petition. I just want to clarify, Polk County has refused to cover us. They won't go into Benton County due to historical county line reasons, even though the Hoskins Valley does extend up into Polk County. I guess that's old boundaries that they need to respect. I'd like to thank the Board for taking up this petition. It's very important to us living out here in rural Benton County in the middle of a bunch of Doug Fur plantations. And again, thank you, Joe Martis, especially for helping us with understanding the petition. And we were accidentally under coverage for six years from 2012 to 2018, but it turns out it was a mistake and so now we're just trying to fix it so we have a little more sense of security, given the current environmental situation. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other, no further testimony on this matter, I will now vote for public hearing. Miss time for deliberations or for a motion?
A couple of comments that I feel like I can make as the first Hoskins Kings Valley Fire Chief. I'm familiar with, you know, boundary issues and we actually have maybe 10 households that are in Polk County that we, that the district covers, which makes it interesting when it comes time for voting and Polk County gets to count a few of our ballots. But I would be happy to make the motion to approve order number 2021-081 for the annexation of the territory into the Hoskins Kings Valley Rural Fire Protection District by the authority of ORS 198 and 478.
Second.
Okay, with no further discussion, I will now call for the vote. Please signify with an aye if you are in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And with that, I'll pass back Vance again.
It's an order, so there's no reading required.
It has to take effect immediately. Okay. Okay. Okay, well, congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it. It helps us feel a little more safe up here. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
Welcome to the district, Jerry.
Yay! We are going to celebrate with water.
Okay.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Okay, at this point, we will turn back to the consent calendar. I have one minor correction to the minutes. I need to pull it from the consent calendar in order to do that. Okay, I would propose to pull 2021 board meeting minutes from the consent calendar. And I would like to amend the language to refer to the Benton County Foundation. The foundation is now under the Benton Community Foundation, just make that minor correction.
Do you need a motion to make this so moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Okay, we've taken care of that item. Now we have all the business approval of the May 28, 2019 Tuesday board meeting minutes. You and I are it on this one.
Make motion to approve the May 28, 2019 board meeting minutes.
Excellent, thank you. Seconds, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next up, we have departmental reports and requests. We have heard fair bit about this topic already. Discussion and decision to approve order D 2021-079A revising fees for permanent applications and services provided by the community development, natural areas, parks and events, and public works departments. And I'm not sure who's taking the lead on presenting today. I see Greg, thank you. And would you would please provide a brief summary for the record of the action that we are considering today?
Sure, thank you, commissioners. We held a work session on this topic two weeks ago. This is the annual fee update for community development, planning fees, building permit fees are set separately. So community development, planning fees, natural areas and parks and events fees, and public works fees. On the community development side of things, we generally went with the 5% across the board increase, which is our standard practice. There were a few exceptions to that, which we discussed in the work session. The largest of those was a sizable increase to the subdivision application fee based on our recent subdivision application experience, which was the first one we have had in many years. And it was clear from that process that it required much more staff time than our fee captures and that that's what we anticipate future subdivision applications to reflect as well. So we've recommended or requested a sizable increase in that fee. There are a few other smaller deviations from that 5%, but generally it's a 5% across the board increase to keep up with inflation and increased costs. Gary or Lynn, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I will add because the question came up about the large gathering permit. If they do a five-year permit, I did confirm that the applicant does need to pay that large gathering permit annually over that five years. So even if they get approval from the Board of Commissioners for five, they still submit their paperwork and the permit fee annually.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any questions we can answer?
Gary, do you have anything to add?
I do not. If there's any questions in ours, George is on the line so he can address those questions.
Thank you. If there's no, are no further questions and no further discussion, I would be happy to take a motion.
I move to approve order number D 2021-079A setting fees for community development, natural areas, parks and events, and public works for 2022.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thank you all. We will be back next year, I'm sure, same time, similar place, hopefully in person.
Thank you.
We are now down to other, since we have no other come up earlier today. The next item up is our.
Commissioner, we need to go back to item 4.4.
I'm sorry, you were right. My apologies. I'm rushing us through here. Yes, we are back to item 4.4. Thank you for that. Welcome next. And I know Rick was with us also. And I need to ask for a brief break to stretch before we jump into this. So my apologies, but if we can convene at 11:30, that would be fantastic.
I just want to touch on that briefly and then I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions specific for DLR Group who really provided the information from this slide. So if we have a courthouse that is, you know, immediately adjacent to the DA's facility, and as long as it's not stacked, it certainly is possible to have this, you know, bond dependency and to move forward with these two facilities. And that would work certainly on the suburban sites where space is not an issue. It also works on the downtown location. Essentially, you would submit a flexible design for permitting where the DA's facility piece could be withdrawn if the bond measure fails, or you could have two sequential permits depending on what our timeline and strategy is. So very possible from a permitting standpoint. The two facilities, if you think of them as two separate structures, would be designed independently, you know, relative to egress and systems, et cetera, you know, even footings, foundations. So there is some more expense, but it's manageable. And, you know, DLR Group has submitted ultimate designs on many projects, so this is uncommented. Let me just stop there, pause, see if there's any questions that either I or DLR Group can field.
Nick and Mitch, with a separate contingent building for the district attorney's offices, I guess the one concern that I would expect to have staff from the DA's office raises that of security and of access into the courthouse on a secure basis? Is that something that can be provided more readily with a, as I understand it, a second building for the DA's office and a part of the building?
Yeah, certainly. When these things are designed with the intent of being added on, we can design it as if it's a future wing that would be connected to that circulation and security. So all the security considerations could still operate the way that they would be if they were done as a single, one-time project. It helps to certainly have all of that information upfront in the site planning and making sure where we can understand how the internal of the building is going to be connected to that, but it would be an issue.
Okay, so it wouldn't be an entirely separate structure, it would be a wing?
Well, it, a wing in that it is not stacked and not, insert, you're not going to shell out the building in the first phase and then insert program into it. A wing in that it is another building that's being built right next to it and would then be connected to it. Separate footings, separate structure. The first building would need to be able to operate independently, so any of the vertical circulation and requirements of that would be totally self-sufficient. When the second piece comes online, it would also have some additional pieces of vertical circulation and all the other mechanical parts to get that to function.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Are there questions from Commissioner, why is Commissioner Malone at this time? Okay.
I'll keep moving. A couple of nuances and details that pertain to some of the information that Rick is going to share. So the county must show the state that it can self-fund if we choose that direction, but a down payment isn't required. And in fact, really, really what the state is looking for, and I spoke to David Moon this morning, is they're really just looking for a commitment. And that may, you know, David said a letter from the commissioners that shows what our strategy is, probably some, you know, light financial analysis that shows, you know, where we expect to borrow from and our ability to service the debt, but really it's that kind of commitment and then, you know, a commitment from a more practical side, which is, you know, moving into the design phase, issuing an RFQ or securing design. They're just looking for our commitment to the project more than anything. We are, we do have the option to reimburse ourselves from the bond measure for some or all of the funding that we might do on our own, so keep that in mind. And very importantly, that, you know, the self-funding opens up the possibility of further funding other elements of JSEP and gives us flexibility. You know, we're in the bond measure to succeed and we're able to reimburse the courthouse funding. And I provided kind of just an example of what I'm talking about. This is really just to tickle your brains. You know, we haven't gotten to this level of detail yet, but I chose 25 million, kind of arbitrarily, because it works nicely with this example, it's half of our, the estimated cost of the correctional facility, but assumed we were comfortable with self-funding 25 million dollars. And soon through polling, we identified that there was really stronger public support for the new courthouse and DA offices than the correctional facility, okay? That's an outcome that could happen. So let's say we decide to put, you know, the full 36 million for new courthouse, DA's facility into the bond measure, drop the correctional piece down to 25 million from 50. And then bond measure passes, we reimburse ourselves for all of the courthouse and DA funding, we're sitting on 25 million for the correctional facility from the bond measure, we then turn around and self-fund the remaining piece of the correctional facility. So that's, that's how all of this can work and kind of give us more flexibility, at least in terms of how we, you know, listen to the public and package the bond measure. So the critical decision that we're facing now today is really relevant to whether we're going to self-fund and/or whether we're going to go back to the state and re-phase the project and have to go back to the legislature for a reappropriation of the OCC and I funds. As I mentioned, the state's, you know, ready to engage. Effectively, we have until the end of the year to make this decision. And really, it's the high-level decision of are we going to self-fund at least, you know, the new courthouse piece or are we going back and re-phasing the project? And so I outlined four funding options, which Rick's analysis speaks to, and kind of drew a line there to kind of separate the decision points. So either of the first two options, either you do nothing and, you know, go back and say you're going to re-phase the whole project, or you fund our half of the design piece, which still requires us to go back and re-phase the project with the state and reapply for, you know, really the lion's share of the matching, which is, which is the construction implementation. Or below the line options three and four, we self-fund our match for the new courthouse, we make the DA's offices bond-dependent, or we self-fund both the courthouse and the DA. Neither of the options three and four require us to go back to the state and legislature for matching funds. So that's how things essentially are stacking up and, you know, the decision is are we above that line or below the line? And then ultimately, we'll have to decide on, you know, to what, to what degree. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Rick and stop sharing my screen and let him --
Will Rick take it away?
And Nick, if you have the ability to still, since I don't have the power to share screen right now, if you would like to pull up the spreadsheet that was sent to the commissioners this morning, if you have access to that.
Actually, Rick, this is Erica, I can make you the presenter if you would like.
Excellent. That will work out just great. I can do that. Good almost afternoon, Commissioners. Great to see all of you. For the record, Rick Crager, Chief Financial Officer for the county. Hope you all had a great holiday. So I think Nick has set the stage really well here in terms of the options that have been put forward. And if we can just real quickly here, get my screen to share. Do that. Okay, seen that okay yet? Okay. So again, Nick's really set it up really well in terms of the four different options that he spoke to. I sent some documents to all of you this morning. One was a summary of analysis that I have performed, and that's really more of a talking document to just sort of walk you through exactly what I'm about ready to tell you. So that's just for your reference to be able to hold on to in case you want to go back and refresh. And then the other piece is this spreadsheet that I'll speak to. I know it's a lot of numbers, it looks a little overwhelming, and I'll try not to make this as painless as I can and keep it, keep it simple. It looks a little overwhelming, but I think as you'll see as I go through this, it'll make sense. So first, I'll speak to, again, you know, what I'm looking to present here today, as Nick alluded to, is how we would self-fund each of the really three options, option two, three, and four, since option one is really not to do anything. But to really speak to how we would self-fund that, again, in doing this, my assumptions are essentially that we would be getting the 20.4 million dollars from the state through, like Nick said, the general obligation self from the state, and that would be with the assurance that we have the ability to do this. In my assumptions, I'm also assuming that there is no bond measure, no county bond measure, that would be our takeout. So really, what I'm trying to paint for you is, almost like you could say worst-case scenario, if we needed to fund this entire project, would we be able to do it and what would it mean to us going forward? So those are kind of the assumptions that I'm making. Now, in terms of the methodology, and you, we've all talked a little bit about this in terms of some of my work going forward, on how do we really look more from a forecasting standpoint to really give you better comfort as we start talking about debt and potentially using that as a tool? I think we all know we are in historic lows for borrowing, and that has been confirmed by our financial advisors. We are seeing incredibly low rates, you'll see in some of my analysis here, that is roughly around 2%, 2.5% of cost of borrowing over the course of 20 and 30 years. So that is pretty incredibly low. I also think that the other question that has come up, I think was posed at the last meeting, was, you know, what is our risk? What is our interest rate risk? And I think our FA did a good job of really, you know, helping me get a little comfort in terms of the term. He believes that, you know, for rates to rise, what needs to happen? And essentially, the way he puts it, that means tomorrow you wake up and the pandemic is gone and everyone, you know, is getting back to normal. Those are the type of events that you would start to expect where rates would begin to rise. I think we all know that that is not going to happen. I think we're looking out probably, in my estimate, six to 12 months to be able to continue to enjoy low interest rates. So we have some time in relation to that. So in trying to put together a model to look at all these options, what I have done is to really focus on what we have, is what is called an unrestricted general fund balance. I like to often call it reserves. Essentially, the dollars that we would have available to us at any point in time to be able to use as a resource if bad things happen. And what we model that against is typically what Poptin has called our discretionary general fund revenues. And these would be basically the general fund dollars that we're collecting, property tax, landfill fees, charges, excuse me. We have the transit laws getting attached. All of these resources coming in as a general fund that would be very flexible, can be used for county services, aren't really dedicated. What we need to be able to show and demonstrate is that if the economy were to go bad or suddenly we have a revenue loss, how do we recover from that? Do we have the ability to be able to count on reserves to be able to fill that hole? What Moody's Rating Agency suggests for good-running organizations is that you have at least 30% of reserves or unrestricted balances available to you, 30% of your total annual discretionary revenues. So that's sort of the model, and that's a minimum threshold. It's not to suggest that, okay, I'm at 30%, we're good. It's really an organization-by-organization review that you need to do and to determine what's the best threshold. Some of the factors that you would be looking at is how certain are those revenues that you're getting? What kind of, you know, outlays, expenditures are you expecting down the road that are unanticipated? So those are all things that we would have to analyze. Based on the history of Benton County, though, one of the things that's very impressive is the stable, the stableness of the revenues, the growth in our fund balance. We've seen a lot of non-volatility, I guess is the best way to put it, and that would lend itself to being able to take a little risk and maybe your percentages are lower. So when you look at this spreadsheet, you'll see the green column and called current analysis, and there's a whole lot of numbers, and I'm not going to bore you with all of those different things, but essentially what they are looking at is forecast of what we think our funding balance or reserves are going to do over time. And there's a couple contributors. Obviously, we've seen historic growth in our fund balance. I'm using approximately 7.5%, and as I shared with Mary Ottley earlier, that is extremely conservative, because if you look at the growth over the last eight years, Benton County has had a pretty large increases in their funding balance, so there has been growth. But again, I think until we have a more precise model, it's important to be conservative. The other thing that we have to factor in is that we currently have some debt and pension obligation bonds. That will go away in 2028, and we will no longer have that, and there will be savings that come back. These are general fund monies that we use right now to extinguish that debt, and that would be resources that would come available to us. So the effort here is to say, okay, what do we think our funding balance is going to be? And then let's compare that to what we think our annual operating revenues, back to those discretionary revenues I mentioned to you. How do we forecast those out and then be able to run a percentage? And you can see, if we didn't, we didn't borrow anything based on this estimate, you can see we're pretty well-leveraged right now, right about 74.65% for the current biennium. That's, again, in comparison to what Moody's would suggest, 30%, that's pretty good leveraging. And you can see over time that it increases substantially, particularly in 2028, when we no longer have some of those obligations from the pension. Now, again, this is just an estimate, and I always remind folks that things can happen. You know, there are increases in per's rates, there's other things that we have to be thoughtful about, and we don't, and that's, again, why you want to make sure you always have a modest level of reserves. But I think this is a pretty good starting point. So then you move to the right, and these are all the options that Nick outlined to you. And let me speak to the one that's not there, option one, which, again, is really no financial risk because it's saying that we don't do anything. But I do want to point out to all of you that, you know, I do see part of that risk is that it would require, and this is going to be the same for option two, is it would require reauthorization of those state general obligation bonds. And I know that, you know, the judicial department has told Nick that, you know, clearly we can get reauthorization for those in '23, '25, but I also know from my own experience that that's never a guarantee. You know, two years from now, the economy could be different. General obligation bonds rely on the state's general fund, and we know how much that can change. And so two years from now, may be a different economy. We also will have other projects that are going to be competing for this particular resource. So that makes me nervous. And of course, I like to point that out as a risk, that we would have to go through a process, and it's always subject to potentially not getting that resource again. So, but then when we move to option two, this assumes that we would really just focus on design, be basically making, and I think Nick estimated a one and a half million, and I didn't check this with Nick, but I assume that would be our share, assuming that maybe we would take a portion of the state's, a small portion, so let's assume about a $3 million expense, but we'd basically be taking a partial commitment of the state resource along with our dollars. Now, for us, a commitment of one and a half million dollars is very minimal risk. So I consider this a low-risk option. And option two, as you can see by, we don't even need to borrow dollars, we could use money, I think, to basically post our portion and get the state's portion to be able to do the design work. And you can see, we would still be at 70%, which is, again, still very, very well-leveraged. So, but you also would, again, like I pointed out in option one, you would have to go back and get reauthorization for those remaining bonds that we didn't use, and that is a risk that you should be aware of. So then let's move into option three. This is where it gets a little more fun, and let's talk about, and this is really focusing on the 20.4 million dollars and the new courthouse. So this would be essentially being able to self-fund our portion of 20.4 million and then be able to fully leverage the state resources to be able to do that particular portion of the project. And you can see that what we have modeled and through our financial advisory is a 20-year bond. So this would enable us to do a 20-year bond, and you can see over time that the lowest that we get is around 51.75%. That is still a good level. I consider this moderate risk. It's lower than our 74%, but it's still leveraging around 50%, and that's a pretty good place to be. And then you will note it starts to go up as we see the full impacts of the payout of the pension obligation bonds. So just a couple pieces of information I would share with you from the write-up itself, and as I point out here, and this is in your material, is that for option three, again, the cost of borrowing that we're seeing for a 20-year bond, about 2.56%. That's, that's pretty good. That's, that's a good rate at this point. So again, I think that it would be issuing what we call a premium bond, basically at a par rate where we would get a premium payment for the, from the bond, the bondholders, and then be able to pay a coupon rate of about 4%. But when you put it all together, it's about an all-in 2.5%, 2.56% all-in cost. So then, let's slide to option four, and this is the full mail deal. So this is adding the 16 million, so this is adding to it 16 million dollars for the DA offices. And I, basically, to do a 20-year bond, I would be falling well to, at a percentage that I don't think you all would be comfortable with. And so what I had to do was stretch it out to a 30-year bond to model this, and you can see that this one's a little bit more aggressive. I would consider this more of what I would say moderate risk, moderate to high risk, is that you can see the lowest you get is around 41.95%. Let's call it 42%. So again, not a bad position, but we're starting to kind of creep into that area of what I would say anywhere between 30 and 40, we might want to be thinking, you know, is that really where we want to be? And I think, again, as I mentioned earlier, over time, you know, we can discuss this more in terms of how much, what our appetite is for risk. We'll have better information as we go forward in being able to evaluate this. But again, we would be able to sustain this with the 30-year bond. And back to, you know, what does that mean just from a cost of borrowing standpoint? You can see the rates here are a little bit higher, but still good, 3.02% all-in cost of borrowing. That is still pretty cheap for a 30-year bond. It still would be a premium-type bond for issuance, and, but, but again, we would, we would see a much lower-type leveraging ratio. Few things that I just wanted to real quickly point out to you, that I think is just important and one I've already mentioned a little bit, is that, again, I'm being very conservative here. There's still a lot more work for me to do to get to that preciseness that I would be comfortable with. I think that we could probably afford to be more aggressive, but until I have the tools in place, I'm not confident in sitting down and taking any further risks. So I try to be very conservative. As I already mentioned to you with the fund balance, the county has showed much better returns than what I have forecast, but I think that that's something that we can hone in on more later. I think the other piece that I want to make sure that I put forward to you is that, under this, I'm trying to demonstrate to you what the risk of this, again, worst-case scenario, we have to self-fund this for the entire term. Now, if you were to choose option three or four, my recommendation, and I think I was speaking to Commissioner Ogierod via email today, we would not need to instantly go out and secure, you know, a 30-year note. What I would probably recommend to everyone is that we do some kind of short-term financing or potentially using our own capital. We might be able to sustain that, depending on what the cost, so that we could really focus on Phase One and Phase Two, which I think, based on Nick and my discussion, is roughly around $8 million. So we could actually be doing that and not be thinking about actually issuing the debt until probably sometime around the beginning of next year. Now, Nick did check in with the judicial department, which made me feel a lot better. I wasn't sure what kind of assurance they would need to be able to get their state match, so it's good to hear that they would just need more of a commitment as opposed to actual money in the bank, if you will. So I think that is something that we would, you know, would be able to approach in a very conservative way as it relates to short-term lending. The last thing I'll say, and I just put it in bold, and I think you all know this, but I just want, want to just make sure I point it out, is that clearly, if this is a direction we end up going and we do get to this place where we have to fully self-fund this, it pretty much takes away all of our future abilities to do self-funding. So when we start talking about, you know, doing other types of things, if we get locked into this particular financing, I don't necessarily have the flexibility to be able to do other types of projects that might be a priority for the county. So I just want to point that out to you. I think you all know that clearly, but I, it's important to know that, especially option four, that's, that's about 36 million dollars of debt. And so that, that is basically puts us at a place where there might be some capacity, but we would be much more limited. So I hope that is clear, Commissioners. Again, I know that this could be a little bit overwhelming and complicated looking at the numbers, but this is a start of something I want to continue to grow and mature with the help of our financial advisor to really give you more comfort. The county has been very good in the past of being prudent, conservative. I give Mary and Joe and everyone all the credit in the world that we've done a great job of managing our finances and we're leveraged very nicely. I think it also puts us in a position now of opportunity to where you might be able to consider using debt as a tool to be able to accomplish some of the big priorities you have going forward. So with that, I will conclude and happy to take any questions that you have on mine or next presentation.
Okay. I see that Commissioner Malone has a question. I know that DA Haroldson also would like to ask a question. So I will begin with Commissioner Malone.
Rick, I really appreciate the kind of background and options. I've been a commissioner for almost three years, and the most information I have on our debt situation, as Mary Ottley said, we're in really good shape. We don't, compared to our resources, we have a relatively small amount of debt, but it's nice to get some numbers to go with that kind of general context. And you may have to run through this again for me to get all the nuances, but this is really a good start. And I would say, if it's accurate, we are relatively, we have relatively low debt, and part of that is because we haven't done some of the infrastructure improvements that we could have, maybe should have, earlier. we could have, maybe should have, earlier. And now, I think it's time to balance the scales a little bit, and increase the debt, and take care of some of the significant shortcomings in facilities that the county currently has. And the word "flexibility" was mentioned several times. That's one of my favorite words currently. And I appreciate that we have some options, and mix and match, trade them with your friends, and have different arrangements possible. Maybe the last comment is, we currently have $20 million from the state, and I wouldn't mind hearing from Representative Ray Field about the future, but assured of that, if we have the money, let's keep it, and not depend on the unknown future. But I can recall, in tough economic times, the legislature actually swept up reserve funds from different agencies.
Commissioner Malone, we've lost your sound. Can you hear us? Can everyone else still hear? Rick, you cannot hear?
No, I can hear Commissioner, I can hear you, but I can't hear Commissioner Malone. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Malone has frozen. Okay. It's too bad. I did want to address the fact that I have spoken to Rep. Ray Field. He would definitely prefer that we not go back and ask for the rescheduling of the general obligation bond sale. He'd rather be able to help us with other projects in order to make sure that we have the maximum flexibility possible. So, yes.
Commissioner Ogero, may I just add, and I appreciate that as well. I think Representative Ray Field, having probably been through the wars, understands that, you know, there is that big risk that you have, and while, you know, he would hope that there would be continued support, since they passed it once, it doesn't always work that way. So I think we're all definitely at that same place, on how do we work to preserve that money this binding?
Excellent. Okay. And DA Haraldson?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I cannot hear you, John.
How about now? Are you able to hear me? Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me on this. I do have a quick comment and a question for the Commissioners. But I guess I would proceed first by apologizing for my casual attire. I am not at the office today, so it is an unusual time to actually see me not in my suit and tie. I liken it to seeing Bigfoot. If you tell people you saw me in casual attire, they just won't believe you. So in either case, here I am. But I wanted to first acknowledge the, you know, all of the work that's gone into informing us to the point that we are right now. And I certainly take very seriously the fiscal challenges that we face, and recognize the fact that, at the end of the day, if we don't have money to buy something we want, or we don't have resources for it, then we simply don't. But that said, I listened carefully to what was said today through Mr. Kurtz's presentation, and also the assessment that was done by Mr. Cragor. And I know that Mr. Kurtz relies upon DLR's information as well, so I want to acknowledge that. But I have to say that, following the Commissioners' last work session, where there was a unanimous vote to include the District Attorney's Office in the courthouse, or connected to it, and we talked about sort of that tunnel-type of model, so that we would have those protections, so we would have the system connections, and really, getting down to brass tacks, so we would have a best-practices model, in effect. That decision, to me, to my ear, seemed very clear. And yet, today, as I've listened to the discussions surrounding the District Attorney's Office, and where it may be placed, and some of the contingencies, it felt to me as though we had taken a step back. I know that early in this process, there's been a lot of discussion about having the District Attorney's Office located separate from the courthouse. I don't know what the origin is of that concept, but this presumed fungibility of the District Attorney's Office is, I believe, in conflict with the Commissioners' decision. I believe that it is not best practice, and I think it's also contrary to the state statute, and what the county is obligated to provide with regards to a facility and office for the District Attorney's Office. So it is concerning, if not unsettling, to listen to these continuing descriptions of scenarios that embrace a model that does not represent best practices. Frankly, I found it ironic to listen to Mr. Cragor speak to, you know, best practices around revenue thresholds, all the while thinking to myself that we're not adhering to best practices with regards to continuing to consider models that would separate the District Attorney's Office from the courthouse. Now, I understand that the Commissioners voted on this already, and perhaps some of those discussions that are taking place today are moot in face of that decision. I'm hoping perhaps that the Commissioners might be able to reconcile what appears to me to be the conflict.
Thank you. That is the reason that I asked the question I asked earlier of Mitch Fein about the building that would be separate from, but adjacent to the new courthouse, that would be attached, it would have functional connection in terms of, I'm thinking that it would be like a breezeway, or something like that, but it would be a separate envelope, with separate mechanicals, et cetera. So it would have the operational effect of being one facility, but it would indeed be built as a separate facility. That's the ideal in my mind. And from an operational standpoint and a financing standpoint, it's not ideal, but I see that Commissioner Wise also would like to speak to that, given the previous vote that we took. So Commissioner Wise.
DA Haraldson, just a clarifying question for you. Are you concerned about the fact that it would be bond-dependent, or the fact that either way, it's a kind of a separate building that is somewhat attached?
You know, all of the, in addition to that, reports are being provided to the Commissioners. For instance, in the options that Mr. Kurtz laid out, that this concept of the DA's office, in essence, being fungible in some way. And frankly, the more that I hear that, I can't help but feel that there's, you know, that this has sort of morphed into something that is, I fear, considered acceptable, as though this is a real option, without any best-practice support behind it. And the fact that we continue having this dialogue around this issue after a decision has been made, does concern me.
I think that we just have to be very cognizant of the fact that we have to be very flexible with respective funding. Our county residents can only bear so much. We have timelines that are not our own. We are likely to have to make compromises as we move forward in order to have a new courthouse, new DA's offices, and new correctional facility, all of which the county really badly needs. So I understand your concerns, but I think that we all have to be flexible. And again, we need to provide direction today. We don't need to make a final decision today, from what I understand, but we do need to do that ideally before the end of the year. So that doesn't leave us very much time. So Mitch, perhaps you could comment on other places where they have similar arrangements, where you've seen this approach taken?
Specific projects, I can't comment on off the cuff today, but operationally, if it's designed and built in one phase, or if it is what we're talking about, a phased project, operationally, there's no difference. At the end of the day, what you're looking at is an array of courts with the DA, offices which are either on another floor, or right next to those. When we design it as a phased project, that relationship would be the same. So from my point of view, it's a question of time, rather than end product. The end product would be the same thing.
I will add, I'm sorry, I will add Mitch's description. You know, frankly, I find that reassuring, because I think it aligns perfectly with what the Commissioners were, well, frankly, what we were discussing leading up to the vote on this issue. And it may well be that we're all describing the same thing a little bit differently. But by the same token, I wanted to make sure that I sought that clarity, so that moving forward, all of those that are part of this discussion can be closer to being on the same page than we might otherwise be.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to assure John Haraldson that there is not some other ulterior motive going on here. What we're really trying to do is make this Rubik's Cube work. And as Commissioner Ogero described, we have an opportunity to secure this $20 million. However, in order to do that, it may require that we end up self-funding, at least initially. And so that is really what I would consider to be the fly in the ointment right now, trying to figure out what alternatives do we have in order to support continuing to receive that $20 million, because that's, as most folks have mentioned today, hard to come by. And so we have worked for at least four years, if not longer, to secure that commitment from the state. And we take that seriously, and we want to maintain that, if at all possible. And so what you're seeing today, John, is just different flavors or variables about how to move forward, and recognizing that some of those options may not be ideal in your mind. And yet, at the same time, we're trying to share with the Board the necessary information about how we can move forward with funding our own progress, and ensure that we can retain that $20 million. So there's a lot of discussion and evaluation that's gone into it, and I don't think the discussion today deviates from the Board's commitment that they made, or decision that they made several weeks ago, ensuring that ultimately, the DA's office is co-located with the courthouse.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone, I know you were cut off because of connectivity issues. I wanted to just circle back and to find out whether you had any other questions for Rick, Nick, or Mitch at this time, or for DA Haraldson?
Yeah, sorry about my, it wasn't me dozing off, it was my machine. But I think I'm, I think I'm good, and hopefully, I was, I think I was right at the end of my comments when I was so rudely cut off. So I think I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. And at this point, Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Malone, do you have preferences in terms of these approaches? What is your feeling?
I do. And like I was saying earlier, I really appreciate Rick's kind of winding out scenarios for the next 20 or 30 years. That's, and like I said earlier, this is by far the most discussion of what kind of shape the county is in, as far as borrowing, in any kind of complete sense. So I, hopefully, I said this before I got cut off, but letting go of the $20 million and hoping that the legislature, which I think at this point would intend to keep that funding if we had to reapply, but I'm very nervous about, you know, that's basically a year and a half from now, what things would be like. And so, and maybe that's my nature, keep the money. If we have the money, don't let go. So that lets out option two. So we have three and four. I would like to go over this again, but I'm more comfortable with option three, you know, significant borrowing, but not as significant as option four. But I could, with more information, I would definitely consider option four. But at this point, I'm being moderate and in the middle there, and option three, I think, makes the most sense with the information we have at this point.
Thank you for that. And I'll, given that option four would bind future boards for many, many terms to come, I also prefer option three at this time. Commissioner Wise?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Rick for all the work that he did. It is very helpful and very detailed. I really appreciate it. And thank you to Nick as well for your information, and letting us know about some of the flexibility of the options. Very helpful. I guess I don't think that re-phasing the project is a good idea, which would rule out one and two. That leaves us with three and four. I would rather shy away from higher-risk situations, and so that brings me to number three. And along with what Nick explained about being flexible with what we put in the bond, I think we can be smart and strategic about that. So at this time, I would go for option three.
Joe?
Commissioner, I would like to ask Rick to speak a little bit more to other funding that the county may need. Earlier this morning, the Board had a presentation regarding improvements out at the fairgrounds, and those improvements are certainly in the millions of dollars. And so, Rick, when you, and you've commented on this earlier today, but when we look at some of the other self-funding that we may need to do, whether or not that be from our reserves, or borrowing, and paying it back, can you speak a little bit to whether or not we look at doing more packaging of our borrowing, or should we be looking at these different needs, separate and distinct?
Yeah, great question on that, Joe. I think, so first thing I will say in terms of my comments, and I think all three of the Commissioners picked up on this, I think, quite a bit, in terms of looking at the two different options. And again, to the DA's comment, this was more talking about, from a debt standpoint, how much we could sustain the model that has been approved. I think the Commissioners are very clear on what they want to do with the courthouse and the new DA offices altogether. This was really more of a demonstration of financing, and how much can we really take on? So I hope that didn't come across negatively, DA. I didn't want it to perceive that I was saying that that wasn't the option. But to option three, three and four, I think that, as I I think that, as I said earlier, option four is going to, and again, this is always looking at worst-case scenario. If we have to finance this entire package through the period of 30 years, we're going to have our hands tied a lot longer. Option three puts us in a position, to your point, Joe, about where could we still maybe be able to do some things? And you can see where, you know, again, this is the current conservative modeling that around 52%, come, you know, 27%, 29%. So I think we're still in a good place where we could still potentially, like you said, package some additional needs, depending on what they are. So, you know, you might even be willing to go to like a 40% after we start to talk about that. And again, just using this analysis example, that's $36 million. So that's additional $16 million that we could be able to put into a fairgrounds or put into other types of priorities. So there is still the ability with the option three to go forward. The question will be, you know, exactly how much? And that's always going to be dependent on what the cost of borrowing is at the time. But what I would say, though, Joe, is that having issued a lot of bonds in the past, it's always better to get these packaged in one deal so that you pay the cost of issuing those bonds one time, rather than doing it multiple. So I think as we think forward, if this is the approach that we take and we start to circle, let's just hypothetically say, spring of next year, if we were to move forward with some form of self-financing. I think we want to put all the projects together so that we can do it all at once and be able to take advantage of that one-time issuing. So I think that, I guess what I would say to you is that between now and probably the fall, we need to be really thoughtful about, is it going to be the courthouse that we self-fund to leverage the $20 million? And what do we want to try to add to that? I think you have capacity, but I would do it all at once, Joe. I wouldn't piecemeal it.
Yeah, thank you, Rick. And just a reminder to the Commissioners, the reason that I brought up this topic is, you know, keeping in mind, we have a different revenue source in the transient lodgers tax. And so that revenue source, when we, when the Board adopted it a year or a year and a half ago, it was our intent to try and utilize that revenue source to either self-fund improvements real-time at the fairgrounds and/or borrow and use that revenue source to cover the debt service every year.
And Joe, one more thing I would add, because we've talked a lot about debt, which, you know, is again, good time to borrow, good time to get low rates. But we do have a fair amount, and that's, you know, going back, I know we didn't decide on option two, but we have a fair amount of flexibility. We don't necessarily always have to go into debt. You know, there might be small enough projects to where we could just self-fund with our reserve and still may, you know, not have to incur that additional interest rate, even though it is low. So, you know, I've estimated anywhere between $6 and $8 million could probably be leveraged right now and still keep us at a pretty adequate level of 50% or above. So, again, those are just factors that we would want to consider as we look at all the various options and needs.
Hey, asking a question, just trying to clarify from my understanding. So what you're saying is, if we were to end up in a position where we want to self-finance the DA's building with the courthouse, it would be better to do it in the beginning, not wait, you know, and if the bond fails, then, you know, that could be a backup, oh, we'll self-fund. But that would be harder to do and not as good of a financial...
Yeah. Commissioner Wise, yeah, I would say it's not impossible, don't get me wrong. I mean, certainly I understand sometimes it just doesn't work and the timing isn't right to be able to do everything once. But if it is possible, you save a lot on the cost of issuance. And basically, the all-in cost that I was quoting to you, either 3% or 2.5%, you want to try to achieve as much of that as you can. So, but I don't want you to walk away saying, thinking that you couldn't do two tranches of debt. It's just more cost-efficient to do it all at once.
Okay. And then, so hypothetically, I mean, we could self-fund the courthouse with the DA's and reimburse ourselves with the bond if the bond passes?
That's correct. And that gets back to what Nick was talking about earlier in his little sample, which I think is a very important discussion about how do we want to structure that bond? Because that's going to tell us a lot. I mean, if we're not going to put the courthouse in the bond, then obviously we're looking at self-funding for the long term. But the assumption here is that, as I said in the beginning, is that, you know, in a perfect world, you put it in the bond, it reimburses us, and then we have full capacity, once again, to be able to go out and do something else. Maybe a jail, or maybe, you know, the other things that Nick was talking about, like $25 million for a portion of the correctional facility. So those are all different types of options. But what you just said, I think, is extremely important to really get to the point of what does that bond need to look like, so that we'll be able to answer these other questions.
And when you talked about the debt sale timing, Rick, that was what I was thinking about, was that we could put it off until, for another year. But personally, I would want to have that decision made in time so that we know what our messaging is. And after we've done a lot of this next round of community engagement, so that we know what we want to put in the bond and have, and potentially be reimbursed for, and what we know we can self-finance and feel comfortable self-financing. And we have to know the community's interests and opinions on that as well.
Yeah. Commissioner, you're right on. And, you know, the timing, certainly, again, the news from Nick from OJD is good. That was good news in that we don't have to make a cash commitment. And so we can move along with short-term financing needs. And my goal would be to hold as long as we can and know, you know, what the answer is going to be, and that will free us up for the future.
Thank you.
Rick? I was going to say, Commissioners, what we do above and beyond the $20 million match is very important to us, but it isn't important to the state relative to the OCC and I funds. I heard three of you say you were comfortable with three. Doesn't mean we can't do four. Are you at a point today where you're comfortable committing to at least three so that Rick and I and Vance can reengage with the state on the funding agreement? Or do you, is there more information that you want to come, or, you know, to revisit at a future meeting before the end of the year?
Rick, I'm comfortable with at least option number three. And I'd require more information and details on moving that towards the fourth option. But at this time, I think three, I'm uncomfortable with the third option.
And I'm comfortable with at least the third option, too. I mean, and I will say, these types of decisions with a lot of moving pieces, you know, I tend to think about them over time, over a couple of days, and might have other things, you know, pop up. But for now, definitely good with at least option three.
Excellent. I am as well.
Right, thank you. I don't intend to call OJD this afternoon. So we'll provide some more time for reflection, but it is helpful. I am actually meeting behalf of the county on Thursday with an AOCOJD support facilities task force. And Joe and Commissioner Ojeda and I discussed that I'd provide a brief update. And so I will share the discussion today and, you know, where we are in terms of our intentions. But again, we certainly should come back and talk about, you know, above and beyond three and hone in on, you know, where our priorities may lie. There's nothing precluding from moving forward. But I will add that, you know, if the county reached the point where they were feeling comfortable with, you know, number four as an option and, you know, committed to that, and I'm not suggesting that as a course of action, but if you did reach that point, then it is kind of a game changer in terms of how we move into design. So we do have, we have to have the conversation at some point, but not before the end of the year. Thank you very much. This was very helpful. And Rick, thank you, of course. And Mitch and Gary for being on the call. And Commissioner Malone?
Just wondering if we need a motion to proceed or, do you have enough to go forward?
I need to defer to somebody that has more knowledge on that topic than I. So, Joe, do you have any thoughts on that?
Nick, it looks like Vance is going to jump in, and then I can add to it if I need to.
I think, Nick, if really the Board's position today as it relates to option three really just gives us a springboard to go back to DOJ, to OJD to discuss states component, I don't think we need a motion yet. We're not yet ready where we absolutely have to commit to a way of financing that may come in a few weeks. I would say, however, that the time we get a pretty firm draft from OJD for funding, that's when we're definitely going to need a motion saying, yep, we're committed to this path. So right now, I think it's direction. But just know, three Commissioners, that once we start down this path, we'll probably come back to you for a hard and fast decision.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Okay. Well, thank you all for a great discussion. It's been extremely helpful. It makes me more optimistic that we're making progress. And that's all good. So, at this point in time, if there are no further questions on this topic, I'm going to move us on into our executive session with respect to property transactions under 192.6602E. And then we will go from there immediately into executive session under ORIS 192.6602H, labor negotiations. So I would like to clear the room at this time, except for the negotiating team for just some improvement program. And Joe, is there anyone else that needs to be included?
Commissioner, it will be just myself, Nick, Gary Pond, and Vance Cronie, I believe, are the four folks that will be joining the group.
Now, this conference is no longer being recorded.
Reaching out to the folks that need to be in the second executive session.